Mr. Marcy.
Mr. Chairman, is Evelyn here? Evelyn Grovestein? If she's not, then, Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Evelyn Grovestein with the term to the Council on Agent with the term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Yes, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Mr. Marcy.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we nominate William Trefoni to be our CMRPC FY 24 delegate with the term to expire March 1st, 2024.
Second.
Yes, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None unanimous.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move that we appoint Jonathan Ruta to the CMRPC to be our FY 24 alternate delegate with the term to expire March 1st, 2024.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Marcy. New business, Dudley Little League. Danielle, could you come up and tell us what you're doing?
Am I good here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just tell us who you are.
Hi, I'm Danielle Colaola. I am the secretary for Dudley Little League, and we are actively preparing for our spring 2023 season, and I'm here tonight to seek your approval for both the toll road as well as, if possible, our annual Dudley Little League parade. We are looking for approval for toll road, suggesting Saturday, April 15th, if that's possible, with a rain date of April 29th.
Anything on the calendar at that time? Just got to work with chief and make sure everything's all squared away. Mr. Marcy.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve permission, give permission to Dudley Little League to hold a toll booth on Saturday, April 15th, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, with a rain date of April 29th, 2023, and also to hold the parade, annual parade, on Saturday, May 6th, 2023, with a main date, rain date of May 13th, 2023.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
I'll make sure I try to get some people to go to the parade.
That would be awesome. We appreciate your support.
We have missed too many, right?
Nope.
We have missed that one.
You know, that was all I should have missed, Mr. Chairman.
The one off the home plate.
Yeah.
I'm going to let you move up halfway this time.
All right. Is the discussion all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Both events approved. All right. What's next? permits, licenses. Nichols College requests for a one-day entertainment license for Wednesday, March 8th, 2023, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and Lot A for a three-piece band performance.
Hello. Heather Bowes, the event manager at Nichols. We're looking to get a one-day license for a band. We're having a fire and ice event in Lot A and looking to have music. They're going to have food, games, festivities outside from 5:00 to 7:00. Where we plan to place the stage is away, so the music will be directed away from Healy Road versus...
You already talked to chief?
I spoke with Public Safety today. I would recommend that the college hire police detail for that night. I haven't heard back whether or not they're going to be doing that yet.
I make a motion, I can make a suggestion, and we don't make any approval till we have approval from the police chief. No objection, those study belts feels differently.
When is it? Wednesday, March 8th?
I know we have got a fire detail that night, too. And Public Safety was the one contacting the police department.
Want to do conditional approval?
Not in a giving mood. Somebody can make that motion if they want, but...
I'll make it because I'm looking at the time turnaround.
Not our problem. They waited until the last minute.
This is true.
Okay. You can make it.
No. It's all right.
Somebody else can.
Any motions on the, from the board? Mr. Chairman, what happens if we don't make a motion? It just...
We have to come back.
We meet in two weeks.
Did I give enough time?
The event is next week.
Right.
I mean, I could let them know that we need to have the police detail.
Right.
Yeah, we don't meet till 12, 13, 14th.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I ask the police chief, was it... Had they ever, Chief, Merrick, had they reached out to you for this, or you had to reach out to them?
They called me today, Eric Strick from Public Safety, reached out and asked my recommendation. My recommendation would be to have a police officer on site. They already have a firefighter on site, and we would be able to have a police officer there.
I'm going to, I'm going to do a conditional one just because of the time, but it's got, they have to do something, right? So I move that we give conditional permission to Nichols to hold one-day entertainment license for Wednesday, March 8th, 2023, from March, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. in Lot A for a three-piece band performance, assuming they get back to the police chief about the police detail, and not until they talk.
Okay.
Yes. Let's not go ahead and then, you know, it's...
Yeah.
When the chief lets us know, then we're good.
Then Michelle can release that.
I light a fire under Eric.
No, you can't, Heather.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. You got a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. No.
Stain? Three to two. Passes.
So, Mr. Chairman, will they contact chief and help John Ruta release her license upon meeting the condition?
My understanding.
That's how I would like it to be, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
All right. Citizens' comments. Anyone have anything they want to talk about that's not on the agenda?
Seeing none, we'll move along.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Solomon.
Before we, it's going to be rather lengthy presentation, should we offer the student rep a chance to do her thing? She doesn't have to stick around if she doesn't want to, or you can if you want to?
I can go now.
Okay. I did, I did suggest it earlier, so...
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is doing well tonight. Shepherd Hill just got off of February vacation. Today was the first day back in school, and tomorrow is thankfully a snow day, but nothing much has been going on. We recently just won, or the boys' basketball team recently just won the Clark Tournament, which is really exciting, and then the first state's game will be played on this Friday, which is also very exciting, so big congratulations to them. Other than that, nothing else has really been occurring at the school. I know you'll be addressing the budget issue tonight, which I brought light to at the last meeting, so I'm interested to see what you have to bring forth onto the issue tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto the good stuff. Public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:44. Mr. Ruda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could just have a few minutes to kind of set the stage for tonight's hearing. Mr. Chairman, on April 3rd, 2018, the voters passed an override in the amount of $1,544,333 for the purposes of funding a portion of the Dudley-Chowton Regional School District budget assessment for the town for the fiscal year beginning 2018. The town of Charlton passed a similar question. My predecessor in the district administration at the time communicated that that amount would allow Dudley to meet the district assessment for up to three years. The effect of that override was to raise the tax rate from $11.68 per thousand to $13.33 per thousand, or from an average family, single-family tax bill of $2,865.38 annually to $3,256.23 annually. Five years later, our tax rate is down to $10.16 per thousand with an average tax bill of $3,667.17 over the course of the last five years. That is a 12% increase, or an average of 2.4% increase annually. Again, in 2018, we understood that the override was to last for three years or until FY 2020. By March of 2020, at the beginning of the pandemic that led up to the shutdowns, the resulting downturn in the economy and the rise in inflation, as everyone knows, prices for everything skyrocketed. In 2020, grocery prices began to rise slowly by 3.5%. By 2022, grocery prices were increasing by 11.8%, and now they remain steady at an 11.3% increase. Same applied to fuel. When the override passed in 2018, the cost per gallon in Massachusetts was $2.78. Today, the average cost is $3.45, declining from its high-water mark in March of 2022 of $4.31 a gallon. And we all know that the cost is, what is, what the cost is now for natural gas, home heating oil, and electricity. National Grid sent out a notice to all customers, including Dudley residents, last fall, informing them and us to anticipate upwards of a 62% increase in electrical rates and to expect a tough winter, and I can, from personal experience, tell you that, that those rate increases certainly came to fruition. Both chiefs here tonight and both superintendents can attest to the increase in vehicle prices. Police cruisers, for example, went up from the time that the town meeting voters approved their purchase to the time of delivery, on average, $4,000 per vehicle, with in some cases more than 12 months for us to take delivery on those vehicles. And all along the way, between 2018 and this evening, we found ourselves, for over a year, dealing with the impact of a global pandemic, a time when I don't think anyone could rationally argue was a great time, but when it would have been possible to revisit the 2018 override funding that had run its course unfortunately by 2020. And not to pile on, Mr. Chairman, but rather to put it all out there for everyone that might be watching at home tonight, or anyone who came to the meeting tonight, we uncovered a hornet's nest of regulatory and compliance issues between 2020 and today involving compliance with dam inspections, environmental challenges with stormwater management regulations, deferred maintenance issues with our town hall buildings and fleet vehicles, and more than $350,000 alone as of this evening to remediate issues surrounding our cap landfill and regulatory mandates that are being imposed by the DEP that are not only impacting the town, but now three major private employers in town as well. So what actions have we as a town taken to adjust? Well, since 2020, we have furloughed more than half of our highway department staff, bringing them back to address the winter snow of 2020 and 2021. Of those staff members brought back, one of the two positions with building and grounds, the department that actually cleans our buildings, takes care of the trimming and mowing of our cemeteries, and provides the general maintenance of our town buildings, was permanently laid off, leaving it to be a department of one. In addition to the duties of this one individual, we have with the assistance of our highway department added cemetery burials. We've also, as a cost-cutting measure, now turned the Department of Building and Grounds into a very small division in our highway department. The costs and expenses of the Building and Grounds Division have been absorbed into the highway operating budget, so in the past, they had their own separate budget. The highway is absorbing those costs at this point. And so while we're speaking to the highway department, I should mention that an additional person, a position of laborer, was not replaced when an employer, employee transferred to the water and sewer department into a truck driver position. And a truck driver position has remained unfilled since the days of my predecessor. Additionally, five positions in the town hall, a combination of full-time and part-time administrative support positions, were combined into two full-time positions after the furloughs, with three positions, two of which would benefit eligible being permanently laid off. Those two new full-time positions cover highway, conservation, planning, and administration, and a newly consolidated land use office, and code enforcement inspections, Board of Health, and Assistant Town Accountant in the newly consolidated Code Enforcement and Licensing Office. In addition to the grants that we hear about regularly from the fire department and police department, I've tasked our administrative assistant, Michelle, who is now our cemetery, parking, and municipal hearings clerk, and the FAA and CIP's administrative assistant, with going after some additional sources of grant funding for recycling and cultural initiatives, and she does that when she's not volunteering for Recreation Commission. I've also asked Jeff Murray and Bill Scanlon to help us track down, become eligible for and to obtain qualifying sources of grant funding, and as we all know, these are sources of funding that are not primarily coming from the taxes on our residents, to help us make a dent in some of our mandated and regulatory costs such as addressing dams, culverts, ADA compliance, and infrastructure, training, and safety, and security needs. Our part-time town planner is also heading the revision of our open space plan, which after 20 years of neglect, needs to be updated to position the town to be eligible for parks and recreation grants. To date, we have, in addition to the public safety grants secured separately by our public safety departments, managed to find and secure funding of approximately $4 million in addition from other local, state, and federal services. Our website and our network are now properly secured and monitored thanks to these initial grant fund sources. We provided for HR improvements and recommendations with grant funding. The board recalls that we updated our employee handbook just recently to include policies provided as part of the HR grant that lowers our legal risk and makes us compliant with today's labor standards and related regulations. We've put in sidewalks, mapped some of our older cemeteries, we're making infrastructure improvements along First Ave and Injarico due to grant funds. We've helped income-eligible homeowners repair roofs and heating systems, and we're also applying for more every day through complete streets, safe route to schools, dams, and seawall grants, and other sources of funding that will help us upgrade and repair our roads, streets, and sidewalks, and they'll help us address our regulatory and compliance issues. Recently, we kicked off a feasibility study that relies on grant funds to determine the best suitable use of 52 acres of town-owned land behind the courthouse in an effort to derive other sources of revenue to address our municipal needs, and again, other sources of revenue means not from the local tax base. Though the competitive bidding process, through the competitive bidding process this year, we've chosen a vendor, lease, and improved unused town land to put a cell tower behind an old sewer pump station. We've now been cleared by the DEP to put a solar array on our cap landfill to offset the additional cost of complying with regulatory testing. We signed two host community agreements for cannabis, one of which has begun to pay the town under the agreement. We created a TIF zone in cooperation with the town of Webster to improve... to improve the blighted area around the mill and over the bridge to Webster to make development a more, a more attractive option to prospective businesses. We've partnered with developers who will bring now upwards of forty-five million dollars of investment into Stevens Mill and create better business opportunities for our town and improve our natural resources around the Rugger Walkway. And, Mr. Chairman, when the funding from the first override ran out, smack dab in the middle of a pandemic, we used Qualifying Care Act and ARPA funds to keep our municipal budget functioning. But we did so not only to keep our services afloat, we also used additional qualifying money to help our citizens through the pandemic, funding public health nurse services, and we were the first community in our area, excuse me, to bring COVID vaccination clinics directly to our community. We helped the Boys and Girls Club financially, using Qualifying Care Act funds to help through the pandemic. We did the same with Bay Pass. And we were happy to cooperate with our school district to help them financially to the extent that we could meet their needs, again, using Care Act money and ARPA funding. None of this, Mr. Chairman, was enough. We, as a town, made a mistake in twenty eighteen when we passed the override. We, as a town, never provided for our municipal needs. We never asked for anything for the municipal side of the budget. We never considered the impact that inflation would have on our ability to maintain the appropriate level of services. We ignored our regulatory and compliance mandates and underfunded our maintenance. I mentioned a two point four percent annual increase in taxes since twenty eighteen. Neighboring town average, single-family tax rates range from two dollars more per thousand to upwards of eight dollars per more per thousand. I won't go through them all, but, you know, we've all heard that argument for years. Mr. Chairman, I will be requesting a one point six million dollar amount be sent to an override vote by residents at a special election on April twenty-fifth of this year. And as we go through tonight's hearing, please keep in the back of your minds that the average single-family tax bill in Dudley is three thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. In Oxford, it's four thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars. In Webster, it's four thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. In Southbridge, it's four thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars. But most importantly, in Charlton, four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. That's over eleven hundred dollars more on the average single-family tax bill with an additional three million dollars expected revenue anticipated just from the Amazon Distribution Center alone in Charlton being built as we speak on Route twenty. Again, I bring that up because we're sharing a school district with a town that is clearly outpacing us on every level in terms of revenue. So the idea that we can just deliver the same level of cost services without any sort of permanent adjustment in our tax rate is neither rational nor is it mathematically possible. Nor is the idea that we will have the ability to meet our legal obligations to our regional school district assessment in a district that we share with Charlton. So tonight, we will hear from our department heads why they've asked to necessarily cut their departments by ten percent. And we will hear about those cuts and how they will impact internal operations and the services that they will be able to provide in FY twenty-four. And at the conclusion of the presentation, Mr. Chairman, after having asked department heads to take a hatchet to their budgets, I'll be asking for direction from the board in terms of funding priorities for FY twenty-four. So when I take a scalpel to my FY twenty-four budget recommendation, we will be in balance. And, Mr. Chairman, when we consider the ten percent cuts tonight, we are starting from a standpoint that it will also require an additional three hundred and sixty-nine thousand. That amount has actually gone up as of three o'clock this afternoon from stabilization. And the remaining one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in ARPA funding for us to be in balance in FY twenty-four. That brought the room down, didn't it?
Thank you, Mr. Ruda. So with that, so as the town administrator mentioned, departmental budgets are presented by the department heads and through the Board of Selectmen, from the Board of Selectmen through the town administrator, we asked for them to prepare a ten percent reduction now outline internal and external impact to municipal areas.
Mr. Chairman, up on the screen behind everyone is the overview for our FY twenty-four budget. You'll notice that I mentioned that the stabilization amount has gone up. In order for us to balance the stabilization fund, it will be four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar infusion. And then down at the bottom, you'll see the ARPA funds were also included for a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. As we go through it.
So we've got, in order to go through these, town clerk, let's start us off.
Good evening. Before I get into the budget line items, I just wanted to give a quick overview of our department. The town clerk budget requirements will fluctuate year to year depending on the election cycles. For example, fiscal year budget twenty-two was a hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine. It included only one election. Fiscal year twenty-three, our budget was one, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. That included three elections. It was a state primary, a state election on nine-eight, state primary nine-eight, I'm sorry, state election on eleven-eight, and the annual town election on June twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. However, two additional elections were scheduled. Nine-eight, which was reimbursed by the school district, and then we have the April twenty-fifth election that is currently unfunded. Fiscal twenty-four budget with the ten percent cut would be a hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and seventeen. It includes two elections. One other additional thing I would like to mention is additional requirements that we have on our office due to the Votes Act. Some of the changes in two thousand and twenty were temporary, but many are permanent. I'll go into those further when I go through the budget. Okay, so for the budget for fiscal year twenty-four, thankfully, the election cycle was in our favor. In fiscal twenty-four, barring any unexpected additional expenses, elections will only have two instead of three elections. So that helped us to get to the ten percent cut quite a bit. This being said, it still wasn't enough to allow for the ten percent budget reduction and meet all of our requirements and mandates. The town clerk's office, like other town departments, has been operating on a very lean budget for years. Thus, it left very little discretionary spending to cut. Approximately ninety-seven percent of our work we do in our office is mandated by state and federal regulations. So I'd like to go through the line items. Town clerk and assistant town clerk line items, I have not reduced at all, and I have kept those at level funding for right now. Ideally, our office would be staffed currently with two full-time employees and a part-time, twenty-hour-a-week staff member. As I mentioned, the Votes Act has increased our workload tremendously. Some examples would be the Registry of Motor Vehicle is now registering everyone to vote. They have to opt out at the tail end of it. We're required to send out vote-by-mail applications with acknowledgements. It's a huge time involvement increase in our office. Elections used to be that it would be a one-day event. Now it spans over a three-month period. Oftentimes, you'll see one election cycle overlapping with another one. So that is why I did not touch either of the salary items, because we need the manpower. We're still required to do all of the work, so we need to be there. The sick time buyback, I did reduce that to zero. I reduced it by five hundred and eighty. At this point, the assistant town clerk is not intending to buy back any time, but if circumstances change and she changes her mind and needs to, we would have to find a way to fund that. Election wages and early voting, I reduced that by seven thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-seven cents. How this amount is computed is by the number of election workers. Number of election workers per precinct is mandated by the state with the exception of the warden, precinct clerk, and greeters. The state and federal regulations specify the number of hours that the polls must be open, and they also specify the early voting. For the state elections, it's been expanded to fourteen days, and for the primaries, it's seven days. So we don't have any ability to fluctuate on any of that. The election expenses, I have reduced that by three thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Of the seven thousand, one ninety-one that is left, approximately four thousand of that is appropriated for voting list, coding, and ballot printing. That leaves approximately three thousand, one hundred and ninety-one for everything else. So that would be the legal notices, the constable posting, election workers' meals, supplies. It's amazing how many supplies you go through with an election between the ink cartridges. With the vote-by-mail now, too, the labels, there's so many envelopes. Anyone that has voted by mail will see what we send out to them. It's got three envelopes in it. We have to put mailing labels on all of them, so that's an expense right there. The glue that they use on the envelopes from the state, they don't stay shut, so we had to get glue sticks and put those on there. We have to have glue sticks for the early voting, too, in the booth. So there's a lot of supplies that we need. Cartridges for the tabulators, the pole pads, we need the printing tapes. This will be tight due to the overall increase in the cost of everything and these extra requirements that we have. The town clerk expenses, this is for our normal office expenses. I cut it down to four hundred and seventy-five dollars. I reduced it by two thousand and twenty-five. Really, this is unrealistic. It's not going to cover our expenses. I know what this amount, we're going to run out really quickly. That wouldn't even cover one ink cartridge for all the five printers that are in our office right now. But in order to meet the ten percent cut that we requested to make, I cut that down. The other line item registered, chapter four forty, this line item is what we use for our census that we're required to do. I actually increased that a hundred dollars. We use just about every penny of that this year. Depending on the households that it goes out to, we have to send it to every household. The cost of postage has gone up, so that's really out of my control there. Then we have our dog tags and licenses. I reduced that to five hundred dollars, so I cut it by five seventy-five. This amount only covers our software program that we have to license the dogs. It has all of the back history, so we're still collecting for past do-things from the past two years when people come in to license their dog. So I don't want to lose any of that information. If we had to, the only thing that I could do is issue dog licenses on paper only and not by the tags. That's what the rest of that money was for, was the tags and the rings. The danger in doing that, though, is it makes it impossible, very difficult, if not impossible, for the animal control officer to identify a dog that had gotten loose without a tag on it. If there's no other identifying information on the dog's collar or anything, or if it's not microchipped, there's no way that she can identify who that dog belongs to. Because right now, we cross-reference with a dog license number. The dog licenses is really an important thing in our office. We spend a lot of time on that, but that's where we bring in the revenue for the town. The other things that we do, we are not making a profit on it, like the vital records. We get one dollar that we put for record preservation. The rest just covers the cost of issuing the certificates. So for fiscal year twenty-two, we issued one thousand, eight hundred and nine dog tags, ten kennel licenses, and one commercial kennel. The dog licenses brought in thirty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. The fines and violations that we levied were nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five. So that brought in a total of forty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars that we brought in through the dog licensing. The total of all town clerk revenues was only fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-four. So it's a huge part of that revenue that we bring in. Bylaw codification, I reduced that by three thousand, five dollars. The remaining one thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars is only the annual maintenance fee. So this would not be ideal by any means because this would not allow us to update any of the bylaws that we have. So at the town meeting currently twice a year, we will have them update the online version and also the paper copies. There's ten departments that have a paper copy of it. That's what people use for references. So if we don't spend that additional three thousand that I cut to update it, it's kind of pointless to have it because people are going to be looking at outdated regs. And if we cut it to one time a year, you wouldn't save any money because it's based on the changes. So whether I do it two times a year or once a year with the updates, it's not going to make any difference financially. The last three items that I have, the voting equipment maintenance fee, pole pad maintenance fee, and turning point maintenance fee, that money that I left in there is only to cover the annual maintenance fees. I didn't decrease any of them, actually two increased. The voting equipment went up one twenty-five, and turning point, which is our clickers for the town meeting, that went up two hundred and twenty-five. So I know it's not an ideal budget, and in some of the line items, I know it's not going to work. But as I mentioned, to get it to the ten percent cut, this is the only areas where I had any leeway.
Any questions for the town clerk?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a comment. Looking and listening at the cuts and the process that had to be taken to get there. And I know as we go along, we can get into the, I'm assuming, we can get into the details, fine-tune these numbers. But when you're looking at what the mandates are, what you have to do, what your job is, and then what you cut and how it affects that, we have to be extremely careful. And I just want to say ahead of time to all the departments, thank you for really going through this and then getting these numbers. It really, really helps, and hopefully, we won't have to use them, but thank you.
Any other questions for the town clerk? Okay, thank you, Lori.
Thank you very much.
Assessor.
Good evening. So like Lori, many of my items are required by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, so I cut where I could. I'm going to start from my bottom-line item and work my way up. I cannot cut our RC personal property. That's my vendor that does all our personal property assessments, so that stayed the same. Inter-year adjustments are done every four years. Those are done in between the mass reevaluation that we just completed for fiscal twenty twenty-three, which is about a sixty thousand dollar project. In between, we call them like mini revals, where we tweak our values for the year, and we have our vendor come in and work with us on that. I can't cut that. That's mandated by the Department of Revenue that we reassess every year. I also could not cut my appraisal software cloud backup for obvious reasons. I cut my educational budget, which was twenty-five hundred dollars, a hundred percent. What will happen because of this is I will not be able to fund dues for the Worcester County Assessors Association and the MAAO, who gives these courses, conferences. And they, once you're a member and you pay annual dues, you pay less than other people that are maybe associates. Or if my Board of Assessors want to attend, they'll pay a higher rate. I have my Massachusetts accredited assessors designation. I need to get twenty-eight continued ed credits every two years in order to keep my designation. So once I zero out this line item, I will no longer be able to attend any workshops, courses, conferences to obtain my credits to keep my designation. I will, in fact, lose my designation. And without this designation, I will no longer be allowed to be an assessor in the town of Dudley or any other town in the state of Massachusetts. My expense account was very small, it was six hundred dollars. Out of this account comes office supplies, ink cartridges, toner, pens, pencils, staples, clips, all the stuff you have in the office. We also use that account to purchase the plans, the large plans that are recorded at the Worcester Registry of Deeds. That will, and I need those because that's where we do lot splits or we create a subdivision, change meets and bounds, easements. All this has to be completed within the appraisal system and on our tax maps. And our tax maps, we are mandated by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue to update every year. Our mapping company, I cut three hundred dollars from that. That would, that was for the building footprints. For any new construction in town, you'll see those on our GIS online maps. I did just find out that it's not necessary for us to fund this. According to my mapping company, that is free from the state now, so they will automatically put those on for us. On our computer expense, I cut four thousand, thirty-five dollars. This is our online property record cards. In the computer expense, this was the only thing I could In the computer expense, this was the only thing I could cut. I cannot cut our maintenance, and I cannot cut the cloud. So the taxpayer will no longer have access to my property record cards from the comfort of their home and on their computer. With all this being said, I had to cut over $14,000 out of my budget. This only amounted to a little over $7,000. The only other place that I can cut is my clerk. So right now, just to let you know, we are currently contracted with Vision Government Solutions to conduct our cyclical inspections, which will be one-fifth of our properties every year for five years. This is also mandated by the Department of Revenue. If we don't do this, they won't set our values, we won't get our tax rate set. This is a project that's above and beyond our normal responsibilities in the office. Our vendor will be sending out mailers for the taxpayers to review, mark up, and send back to us. This would be things such like on their property record card, how many bedrooms, bathrooms, heating system, your lot size, the measurements of your home. Those will come back to the office, they'll be sorted, and be data entered by my office. The office will also need to call taxpayers to make appointments, so that we can get in and do an interior inspection of their home. This will take a lot of time. All properties will be measured exterior, and this includes all outbuildings as well, such as decks, poles, sheds. All those changes that need to be made will be done in-house by me and my staff. Each building that is inspected will have a new photo to put into the system, which will be put in by me and my staff. With the extra responsibilities, we'll be forced to close our office at least one day a week, as the hours I've cut in my clerk's salary will be eight to nine hours per week. We will not give access to the public by telephone, by email, or at the counter, so that we can get done the work we need to get done to keep the office running. With the property record cards no longer being available online, we'll increase the traffic and telephone calls from the public, appraisers, mortgage companies, insurance companies, and banks. Once we put this online, our traffic in the office cut way back. So now we'll have less staff and more traffic. These 10% cuts from an already leaned budget will cause serious problems in the assessor's office. Instead of moving forward, we will be set back to where we were 10 to 15 years ago. We have more streets, more subdivisions, more businesses, and more homes. So we will cut our staff, we will cut our budget, and try to make it work.
Thank you.
Good evening. In the interest of time, I won't go line by line. I will give you the highlights or lowlights, if you will, of the cut. One of the major cuts that this would result would be a cut to our IT budget, meaning that our computers and other equipment would not be able to be replaced or repaired. An average of 50 people a week use our computers, and about 100 people a week come in to use our Wi-Fi to work. That includes students, folks who are applying for jobs. We have a number of people who come in to take care of licensure issues for their small businesses here in town, and we would drastically reduce the availability of those resources to them. We would not be able to pay for several of the software products that we use to connect with our patrons and to provide services. Our maintenance spending would have to be sharply reduced. Building repairs that were not absolutely crucial, including plumbing issues, heating, et cetera, would not be able to be addressed. And as a note, we see about 100 people a day in the library, so we are heavily used, and things, some of you may know, our heat went out this morning. Things are constantly breaking down, and that would present a real problem for the public if they came into a building with limited plumbing and no heat. Programming, especially summer reading, would have to be sharply reduced, because we could not purchase our program materials, craft supplies, et cetera. Last year, there were 492 participants in our summer reading program, so you can imagine the impact that has on literacy for children when they're participating in that program over the summer. And to not have that would be a real detrimental impact to especially the youngest students. Also, last year, more than 5,500 people attended programming at the library, and that would again be reduced. We would not be able to purchase a full range of materials for any of our material selection, books, DVDs, et cetera, which would put us in violation of the state's mandates governing library expenditures. And most importantly, a cut to our budget, particularly of this magnitude, will put us in violation of state mandates for funding for libraries. This would have two major consequences. One, we would not receive state aid funding. We average about $25,000 to $30,000 a year in state funding for libraries, which obviously provides a significant supplement to our budget. A 10% cut of $39,000 on the state end would actually be a cut of $75,000 to $80,000 when you take that into account. Two, our library would lose certification from the state. What this means is that Dudley residents could no longer access materials at any other library in the state, whether they visited that library in person or requested materials through delivery. To give you some idea, we requested and received over 5,000 items last year that we were not able to purchase, but other libraries supplemented. It would also mean that a Dudley resident walking into the Webster Library, which obviously many of our residents do, would not be able to check out any materials there. Essentially, our library would be cut off from the statewide resources that are available to libraries, and they would have limited access to many of the materials that they rely on. It would, it would be a major impact, particularly for the children and families in Dudley, and also for many of our senior citizens who rely on us for resources.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Sorry. When the library was built, I forget, 10 years at least, all right? There was a sizable amount of monies left over that was gifted by a local family. At that time, the Board of Trustees came before us, and they put that money, I'm going to say the wrong thing, but something like the Worcester County Library Trust. And we were told at that time that that was funds that could be used later, ubiquitous later, with a simple request. It was our monies, they were holding it.
If I may, sir, that funding is in the Greater Worcester Community Foundation. It is in what is considered a donor-directed fund, which means that the Crawford family, who graciously gave that funding, are able to indicate what purposes it should be used for. And that money is specifically restricted to things which are not covered by the library, by the town budget. So in other words, if it is a town line item, say salaries, the endowment cannot be used to cover that. It is for supplemental expenses. We use it to cover some of our programming expenses, as one of our trustees will say wants and not needs. But so because the donors have made those restrictions, that funding is not something that can be used to supplement a cut to our budget.
So that, those funds, Mr. Chairman, those funds can't be used to supplement supplies, books? So what, it can't be used to fix your heating system?
No.
So what can it be used for?
No, we can use it for programming. We are currently in the process, the urging of the Crawford family, we are planning to turn the vacant lot, which belongs to the library and to the town, into a community garden area with some of that funding. But it is not meant to be part of the operating budget, is restricted from that.
So with the consent of the chair, can the librarian, can they, the trustees provide us the amount in that fund?
It is currently about $1.5 million.
How much has ever been used?
We have actually gotten in trouble for not using the, there is interest every year. We withdraw about $15,000 a year from that fund, which gets used. But we also are restricted from touching the principal.
Would you have permission? Can I, could we just get that conditions in writing from the library trustees? I mean, she just spoke about it, but I'd like to have it so I can read it. That's okay?
Is it possible to get?
Certainly. I've sent it to John Ruta a few months ago, but I'd be happy to send it again.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Thank you.
Good evening. So I was asked to, was that the body with a 10% reduction, like all the other departments? Have a brief summary. Because of contractual obligations, the 10% budget cut actually becomes closer to a little over 13%. Union employees and contract negotiation beginning in July would be an increase to those line items. So the first thought would be the elimination of the foreman's position, the position, not the individual. The individual is rolled back into another position. As the town administrator noted before, there was a labor's position that was not filled due to a transfer into the water suit department, and there was an unfilled truck driver's position that remained as well. Further reduction to the machinery maintenance account, we have an aging fleet that is in constant need of attention. Reduction in the budget line item for equipment costs, which, this would impact the department's ability to update some of the smaller equipment that's necessary to perform the everyday duties of the department. Cutting the general expenses account, which is, you know, potential risk creating situation impacting everyday expenses, and this rising cost in pretty much every consumer commodity and anything that we, anything that we deal with in the department. Also, cutting in half the line item for the traffic paint, and a reduction in the road maintenance account, which would further minimize the department's ability to perform progressive road repairs, and this typically covers unforeseen issues that appear on a regular basis, patching roads, making necessary repairs. And finally, there's a line item for hardtop, which is, covers the cost of asphalt for some of this patching, cold patch that we keep on hand for necessary repairs throughout the winter. And so the total impact, instead of being the $129,000, settles out at $148,520 would be the impact to the highway budget.
Thanks, Jim. Board of Health.
Good evening. So I was asked to have a 10% cut to the Board of Health budget, first item to be cut. How could we not cut the board stipend? We were brought back up to getting a stipend again, and obviously, that would be the first thing to go. How that's going to affect is that it's going to be difficult for members to give up an entire day on a weekend, an entire Saturday, several times a year, to do these mandated drills and trainings that are state-mandated. It's a difficult, we know that we're a volunteer, we know we put in a lot of hours, but when you're giving up several weekends a year, it's, it's difficult. So that's where I can see that being in effect. I did cut expenses, basically cut that down some. We still have to have money to print out all the permits for the restaurants in town, businesses in towns, any facilities that we inspect, postage for certified mailings when we have housing complaints. That's where a lot of our expenses come into play. When you have a housing complaint, you have to send a blind mailing, a certified return receipt mailing. Sometimes you're sending that to several addresses, because one knows that you may not have a correct address for someone, so that takes a little bit. We would also be cutting our travel. How that would affect would be, again, not being reimbursed any mileage if you had a far distance of a training that was far distance away. It's going to be just a deterrent for some to not want to do trainings, not want to use their own vehicle, putting mileage on and getting, you know. Earth Day, we'd be cutting Earth Day. It means going back to the basic trash pickup. We were finally, after several years, getting it to be more of a community day event, having some little extras, providing water and granola bars and things like that. Cutting our Earth Day fund would mean we're just going back up to picking up trash, having the dumpster, which graciously we have through, donated through the contract with Pratt, and we'd be supplying them trash bags, and here you go, yeah, you know, it'd be back to basics. Board of Health trainings we would cut, that would mean that we would not, staff or members could not attend any mandated trainings that the state requires us to attend. If we can't pay for the training, we would not be able to attend it, which can then affect down the line, not knowing about new regulations, what to follow, how to do things. The state mandated tobacco checks, I cut this month. Fortunately, at this time, we have a tobacco coalition that was just set up by the state of Mass, so we have that going forward for the next year. But I don't know from year to year how that will be. We could, the following year, they could say, nope, there's no more of that. So then we'd be, we would be back to being required to do state mandated tobacco checks, and we would have to pay an outside service to do it, because the state doesn't allow years ago you used to do. You could have young people in your town be trained, go out and do them, they don't allow that anymore. You have to hire one of their particular vendors. Last thing we would cut would be Board of Health membership dues. We would not belong to the Mass Boards of Public Health, which does offer us some benefits, such as informational training, informational newsletters, things of that nature, but it is something that we could live without. I did not cut my agent salary. As you know, I have a 10-hour-a-week agent, which is trying to do all the work in the town, so that was something where we definitely could not cut anything. So, cut the best that I could.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just point out, for the Board of Health, we were speaking about increasing the amount of the agent's salary, because 10 hours a week is not cutting it in our IMA with Webster. So we would either look to continue with that IMA with additional staff in the office on a regional basis, or hire our own agent. This year, we were able to free up $5,000 to have an independent vendor come in and do our food inspections, which certainly couldn't be, that's not something that's even negotiable for a cut. We have to make sure that the businesses that serve food in town are providing for the proper precautions, so that we have a healthy community when they go and eat there. They need to be able to trust that, at the very minimum, they've been inspected and it's okay to eat in local restaurants. So just as we go through the, continue to go through these exercises, and I know the board members are thinking about further direction to give me in terms of priorities, I want to make it clear that cutting out health services to this level is certainly something that needs to be considered by the board.
If I may add, we have been notified by the Department of Public Health that they'll be doing an independent investigation this coming fall into the town, as it may be mandated for a full-time agent. They're coming down on all the towns that do not have full-time agents, and they're mandating them to have full-time agents. Just as a little.
Just as a mandate without
Yeah.
any reimbursement.
There's no funding?
No.
None of the unfunded mandate?
Sorry, we got it.
Yeah, what a surprise. I'm sorry.
This is my shock face.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Veteran Services.
This has been a
This has been a tough day trying to go through all these numbers with the Veterans Office. A lot of people don't really realize everything we do down there is by federal and state law. They passed a law in 1944, they had to have a Veterans Office in Massachusetts to, in, in communities. Other states outside of Mass, there's one a me per county or have an office with a staff. But in Massachusetts, it's much different than the rest of the other states. So I'm going to start with the line item Veterans Benefits. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 115, which is a state program, $135,000 is being allocated. This 10% reduction puts a line item in jeopardy. If there are any additional veterans needing services in Dudley, it's going to throw the whole budget over. When I first started here, we were averaging about $220,000 a year with Veterans Benefits. We have brought that down by utilizing the claims work with the VA to transfer people from state benefits over to federal, to get a federal pension, to get a VA pension, VA disability compensation. And it's been very successful. And right now, it's fairly low what it was in the beginning when I first started. But right now, it's 135 with 10% reduction. And if anybody, if any more veterans walk in my office who need benefits or qualify, then we're going to go over budget, we're going to go over this budget. I went through all the numbers today, and that's where we stand. Keep in mind, most of the money that we do spend on state benefits is reimbursed from the Commonwealth back to the town of Dudley, and it comes back quarterly. So the money doesn't come back to my office, it goes in basically to the general fund, or whatever the treasurer or accountant does with that. All right, line item Veterans Expense, $720. This is out to a 10% reduction, which prohibit the purchase of any updated VA manuals, mandatory training, office supplies, and other documentation. This could result, it will result in VSO losing certification, which means the state will not reimburse the town of Dudley for services I just talked about, the financing. Next will be line item Memorial Day Parade and Events, $540. This 10% reduction, which will affect the beautification of Hero Squares. The Hero Squares are for Dudley's, Dudley residents who have given their life for the country. These are soldiers or other members in the military who were awarded after death a Silver Star or Army Cross or a Navy Cross, whatever branch they were in. The cross is just under the Medal of Honor. That's what these monuments we have in the town are for and throughout the country. These monuments are for the same reason. But we use it as a beautifier to make sure that we take care of the plantings. We clean them, we, we put up American flag on each monument, and, you know, we also do other things.
Anyone have any questions for Veterans Agency at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I was just compiling some statements so far. Where, I'm hearing that with a lot of these cuts, and you have a lot of mandates, and you're losing certifications, which, besides the cuts, everybody's pointing out the 10%, 11%, what have you. When you're losing certifications, you're losing additional finances as well. And when you're not following through with mandates with the state, they're going to come down. And they're going to say, well, you have to, or we're going to be charged fines and fees. So that's additional cost to this 10% or whatever percent each department's cutting. And then if we lose any standings in each department throughout, you know, the county or the state, as some people have stated, that also affects us. Now, we're talking short-term and long-term. Because what happens when we have to get the money back, they have to get recertified, and they lose out on all these classes and everything else they need that they're required to have. So I just wanted to point that out as well. Thank you.
You know, Mr. Chairman, to piggyback on Mr. Landry. I was on, some people here too are present, but I was on the board long enough back in the day. We closed the town hall one day. We already heard the assessors' office talking about reduced services. Just like Mark said, offices that were taking the money, helping the town's budget, those days were not available to the town. So, I mean, every department, it's, they're all doing a wonderful, a great job. We can't ask for much more cooperation out of just about everybody. It's bleak. And like Mark said, you lose upfront, you're losing the long term, and sometimes you don't get it back. It's a little soapbox, sorry, but Mark struck a chord with me.
Do you have anything else?
If I could. The other thing that's hitting us hard is coming from the federal government. They're sending letters to all the veterans, anyone who's been closely connected to the PACT Act, Camp Lejeune, I'm sure everybody's heard about the commercials, the social media. It's motivating people to call my office above everything else. In the last four months, it, it's been extreme. I'm getting sometimes 35 phone calls a day when I'm in the office. And if I'm not in the office because it's part-time, then I have even more messages waiting for me. I get, getting emails, I'm having visits walking in. These are, a lot of them are people who aren't even, don't even have any kind of disability. They just feel, I was at Camp Lejeune, and I want to get on the list. And there was 150,000 people on the list right now. But if you, you have to have something. There has to be something, you know, connected to some disability, some condition. But it's, it's buying a lot of time. A lot of time is being, is being pushed on us. And there's also changes coming through the VA. They're telling us soon that we will not be able to use paperwork, that we have to use a special system, which the license is $500 a year, and it's $500 to buy the software to use it. They don't want us using paper. They want us to go to that, that system. It's been out there for a while. But there's a cost associated with it. So, but the federal government, I mean, they're sending these letters out, they get the attorneys on, on television, on the social media, and it's just, it's just adding to the amount of work that we, we have had. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Town Administrator.
Bear with me while I multicast a little bit here. Mr. Chairman. So I guess we'll start at the top with the Selectmen's Budget. I'm responsible for several division budgets within the overall town budget. So based on a lot of feedback from every member of the board, the Selectmen's salaries would necessarily be reduced to a dollar. So everybody would be entitled to 20 cents annually for the stipend. And you'll notice that at the bottom, you'll notice at the bottom, there's a 36% reduction in the Selectmen's Budget. This is, so this is just an example of what I need to go back and do for the May 9th, I'm, May 9th, March 9th meeting, is to go back with a scalpel like we've talked about, after everyone's taken, at my direction, taken a hatchet to their budgets. So we've taken a 36% reduction for the Selectmen's Budget. And then if we go down to the Building Inspector, well, we've had discussions internally about about our part-time Building Inspector potentially being ready to retire. We don't know. I'm not going to, certainly going to try to push that along. But we certainly can't take away from his $30,000 part-time salary and expect that, you know, for the sake of that, that amount of money, we're going to get a Building Inspector that we can replace for anywhere in, you know, less than $70,000 to replace Nelson. So that 36% reduction, the stipends from the Selectmen, part of, part of that money went towards keeping his salary intact. Because the Building Department is so small that a 10% reduction has a direct impact in his, in his salary, in his part-time salary. Those are the type of things we've done. So to go through it, we cut stipends on, out of Selectmen's Budget. See if I can put this back up here for everyone. We cut stipends out of the Selectmen's Budget. We cut town reports, which we're required to provide and make available, publish town reports annually. We usually have a $5,000 budget. We cut that in half. We've cut Selectmen's Expenses, and we cut archival preservation out of the budget. That's a, now, here's another example of going back with a scalpel. We cut that $5,000 line item. There's an anonymous donor in town who matches it every year. So that $5,000 cut is actually a $10,000 cut by removing that amount. Go down to Administration. We cut temporary and fill-in labor. So I mentioned in my, in my, in my opening summary that building and grounds was reduced to a department of one. We use temporary and fill-in labor to help that one person cut the cemetery, cut the grass at the cemeteries, you know, and do building maintenance and that sort of thing. We also brought in, you remember Olivia, we brought in an intern who did a lot of work for us at a really price-to-move rate. We've, we've eliminated that, that position altogether. We've cut our legal budget, I believe by $5,000. We've cut vacation buyback. Operating expenses, we've cut. We've removed our line item for DMC, public safety, which we've been able to finally add in. Public safety, you know, we were, we were fortunate enough to get cameras and, and access card readers through a grant. But now we need to maintain those systems, and that was going to be that small line item. We've cut that. HR expenses has been cut. We were able to take away inspections for fuel pumps because, as the board members, the town removed their, our town-owned fuel pumps in an effort to reduce our risk. Should those things ever need to be replaced, it would be a huge expense. And environmentally, if they have a leak, it would be unbelievable for the town to mitigate that problem. So that was a natural cut. And then grant and project design, and I've, I've proselytized about this a lot of times. We, we have a very small budget for grant and project design. A lot of times, we use that to offset matching funds, or we hire CMRPC to do the grant and project application for us. And some, and usually that's a reimbursable event if we're, if we're fortunate enough to get the grant. But there has to be some, some money upfront to pay for those costs upfront. So in cutting that line item, we run the risk of, you know, for the sake of $25,000, potentially losing out on $700,000 in grant funding, for example. Again, Mr. Chairman, hatchet right at this point, not a scalpel. Information Technology, I know that Debbie's going to come up next, and she's really eager to stay here and discuss this as long as we know it possible, but I'll steal some of her thunder. Online Services, you heard the assessor talk about the convenience of being able to go online and access zoning maps and that sort of thing. We were able to get online services through CARE Act funding. We were able to set up our software, and then 24/7 you can go online and you can apply for a permit, you can, you can file a complaint. And it brings us up into the way people conduct business in the modern day. It's a $26,000 calendar year investment. I've cut it in half to $13,000, thinking that maybe we can work with the vendor and split that payment up. I think we've tried, and they've said, no, it's a one, one-shot deal. You pay for the yearly, the yearly cost when you receive the invoice. Help Desk, we've cut ours on the Help Desk. There's way too much now in terms of technology for just Debbie to handle working part-time, also as our town accountant, which, based on tonight, you can see is, is, is probably more than a part-time job. And cybersecurity budget has been cut altogether. We've managed to secure our network and have done a lot in terms of, with grant funding, securing our network and our website and so forth. But now the monthly, the quarterly monitoring and that sort of thing would have to take a hit. I'm also the person who does the municipal expense budget. We have a dam's line, a dam's line item for $8,000. We have stormwater in dams for 30. We have a dam's line item for $8,000. I've removed, of those two regulatory compliance mandates, I've cut that by $8,000. Our energy budget, municipal expenses, is, is been cut to, well, it remains at 70. It's gone, it's, it's gone north of $100,000 this year. Obviously, when I go back with scalpel, I believe that the Board of Selectmen want me to keep the electric running in this building and the other town buildings, so I'll have to replace some money into that account. But again, another hard choice to make. And finally, I'll let, the treasurer is here tonight, so I'll let him discuss his budget when it, when it comes up.
Any questions for the Town Administrator? Thank you. Town Account.
Good evening. So I do have the accounting budget and the information technology budget here. Jonathan went over most of the information technology, but I'll start with that one just in case. So the expenses, I reduced by 2,500. But those are mostly for licensing, for like our antivirus, our firewall, our two-factor authentication, our LastPass, all those things. And, you know, most of those things, I mean, all of those things have really helped our network stay safe. And as we know these days, it's dangerous not to keep those things. So we're going to have to drop some of those. And the e-permit inning that Jonathan mentioned, that's all the online business with the permits and things. And that's going, you know, people have to start coming back in with paper, you know, and money, and it's just, it's, it's not a good thing. The Help Desk, not only do they help with some problems, but they also come out here and do wiring, repairs, and we use their money for that. Because I don't know, I can't climb through the ceiling and do wiring and stuff. So they help with all those things. And if we drop cybersecurity, which used to be grant-funded, we're not going to have those guys helping us out. It's a third party, and that's all they do is cybersecurity. So, I mean, we're always, like, once a week I talk to this guy, we have Zoom calls all the time. And they really help out. Again, this is really dangerous. We all know what happened in Chautauqua a few years ago. And we don't need these things to happen. But, you know, we drop that, that's, we're not going to have that help anymore. So that's the IT budget. My accounting budget is, is pretty small. As everybody knows, this year, you know, my plans changed. So I can reduce the salary in the Assistant Town Accountant salary line items right now because we didn't think I was going to be here, so. So, you know, that kind of worked in our favor, so my plan's changed, and here I am. As far as seminars and classes go, I, I'm certified, and I just got recertified last year, so I don't have to get certified again for three years. But if we do get another person in my office, and that person wants to get certified, we would need the money to do that. Unless they already come and they're already certified. And then software support, we're in the process of switching the accounting systems, and we still are. But the old system, we want to archive it, because otherwise we won't have access to any past records, any payables, payrolls, anything like that. So in order to do that, we were going to get a, a license for maintenance for the old system, and it was going to cost $5,700, but that would be a one-time fee, and that would be forever, to perpetuity. Otherwise, we pay $2,400 to $2,700 a year. So in a couple of years, it would pay for itself. So those are the cuts that we made. The IT budget is actually cut 36%, and my budget is cut 10%. That's all I have.
Any questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Deb, for sticking around.
I do have some questions, Mr. Chairman. When you're talking about affecting the salary and some software, I know we went to a new system, the Vadar. And how would it, where, where are you right now? You just said, because it was last year we started transferring over. On reconciling, where, are you caught up for 2022?
Not with, not with Vadar, not at all.
How about the old system?
The old system, I'm up through December.
Okay. And the VEDAR, what do you, do you know what you're up to?
VEDAR hasn't been reconciled at all. July, we were working on and, you know, I still talk to VEDAR probably every other week and we're still trying to figure out what's going on, but fortunately, no.
With VEDAR?
I'm not sure it's VEDAR, it's just the way the two systems work differently. So it's really hard to get all the fund balances over there and try to figure out which ones are right and why the ones that aren't balancing aren't, you know. And Ted Cormier is great to work with at VEDAR and he's been trying really hard to figure it out and so have I. But between, you know, trying, doing two accounting systems,
Right.
you know, trying to balance one and, and switch over to the other, it just, it's, it's, it's a lot of work. And it's just been really crazy for one person to do it, so we're doing the best we can.
That, that's what I was going to get at because I, I know that you and I have sat down and we've gone over this and you're, you're talking. The system was, the transferring over was not intended to be so long. And the VEDAR system, although it's been around a while, it's new to us Dudley. But it, it's a decent system. But to be using two systems at the same time, the amount of time we've been doing it, you're right, it's time-consuming. And then when you're talking about software, when you're talking about licensing, it, it's financially costly. So I just want to make sure that that's moving along. So if you're talking July, that's coming soon. If we don't get the, the monkey wrench out of that machine, you're talking, you know, several hundred days behind. And as you know, when you reconcile in that business, they say you got to do it every, every month to be 100% correct, where a lot of this isn't being done within that timeframe, so we're not getting correct numbers.
We do, we, well, I do it every single month after I get the
In the old system?
The information I need, yeah, in the old system. I always did it every single month.
And meanwhile, the, the new system's just sitting there.
Yeah, I mean, we use it because we're using both systems. We're paying through that system and we pay through the old system just to keep everything up to, up to date. And because I know the old system so well, I can get people's, you know, answers to questions really quick.
Okay.
There's not, we can't just stop.
Right.
Then I'd be really nervous that how would I know if the other one balanced?
And everything's balancing out?
The old one, yeah.
Okay.
But not the
And that's up to what, December?
Through December, yeah.
And we're in February?
Yeah, I'm still, I'm waiting for January figures.
Okay, and that, that, so right now we don't know?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So Mr. Chair, Deb, to Deb. Why is it taking so long to transition to the new system?
Well, I wish I had a concrete answer for that. It's just, if you, you know, I don't really want to start throwing out like fund balances and all those, those, the terms that we need to use. But the fund balances in the, in my old system always equal the expenses in my old system because that way, you know, you got the money in each fund to pay for the expenses in it. But VEDAR doesn't work that way. VEDAR just has fund balances and you just use the fund balances. But when I sent him all the information to put in, it didn't come out to equal what we had in the old system. So he, we were, me and him have been trying all these months to figure that out. And then the cash system doesn't seem to work the same way as our cash system works. You know, everything's a little bit different and then all the accounting numbers are different. So we have, it's like, it's learning a whole new system while I'm still doing the old system, you know. And, you know, I don't think I'm stupid, so, you know. I think, you know, I could probably get it if that's not the only one I could do, had to do, you know. But it's, it's just, I don't know, it's just really, really confusing.
No, it's not a reflection.
And I wish I had a concrete answer for you, Steve, but you could come sit with me and go watch what we have to do. You know, we have to do the payrolls and payroll, it's just crazy. It's really crazy in there. We'll get there.
Yeah, I know.
I have faith that we're going to get there, I just don't know when. Although I can't, I don't think we can do another year of both systems. I mean, I, I mean, I don't think I can.
Yeah.
I don't think I'll be standing here in July if that, if I had to.
You may not be here too.
It's crazy, it's just.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Two months ago, I did not picture doing this in front of the board, presenting a budget with a 10% cut. But unfortunately, I had to go over all the numbers and take a look at where we can cut. With a budget that is approximately 90%, if not more, wages, salary, overtime, it's really hard to find places to cut a budget to meet the 10% cut. So I'm just going to kind of go over a quick brief of what the cuts would do and then I can point them out on the actual paper. So the budget that I submitted with 10% cut would cut, lay off two full-time officers. It would lay off a full-time administrative assistant. It would eliminate the school resource officer from Shepherd Hill, putting them back on patrol. It would eliminate the reserve shifts, pretty much eliminate the whole program altogether. It would, I would not be able to fill the detective position, which I've been anticipating to eventually do with the promotions. I would eliminate the desk coverage, which right now, if you come into the station, if the officers are on the road, sometimes we put somebody part-time on the desk to help you with accident forms and stuff like that. I would cut the expenses to a bare minimum. Basically, the expenses would be cut down to about $100,000. That includes gas, tape for a cruiser that we leased, it's about $22,000 and just essentials to run the department. The, we would also be cutting down some of the programs that we offer right now. Some of them, car seat installations. We have an officer come in and help out install car seats. Alice training, if you remember, there was an officer, a couple of officers helped the town hall with some Alice training. It's active shooting classes. This year, we were able to hold those classes at Shepherd Hill, at the middle school, elementary school, town hall. We were able to also do Tri-Valley. All that costs money. So by eliminating that, we would be eliminating those programs. And also we do some summer programs where the school resource officer spends a week or two at Shepherd Hill with some of the young kids. He does a Lego program and it's funded by the police department and also by the school department. But we would have to cut that in order to not reduce any more people. But the biggest thing is you would have a reactive police department. Our officers would be discouraged from going out there and burning gas. Our officers would be discouraged from going out there and trying to, you know, create expenses. So this happened a couple of years ago where we did lay off officers. The ultimate effect of it created more overtime. We have a two-minimum staffing. I would not recommend going to a one-minimum. It's unsafe and I think it opens up the town to a liability down the road. So we'd still try to manage a two-minimum officer. So just going by the line items. The police chief's salary has a little bit of savings there. The clerk's salary is eliminated. The four sergeants will be funded per contract. The patrolman, you're eliminating two officers, that's where you see the reduction. Everything else, for the most part, is all by contract. So you can't really cut that because it's by contract with the union. The expenses, I cut that to meet the bare minimum necessary to run the police department. The training, state mandates a lot of the training on the officers. And every year it just increases, increases, and increases. That's something that we can't cut. Also, the expenses every year, they go up. The cost of ammunition goes up. Just like everybody else, the cost of just regular supplies goes up. So unfortunately, the staffing, when I got hired full-time, we had 16 full-time officers. Right now, we have 16 full-time officers. If you look at some of the area departments in the last 20, 21 years, they've grown. Our department just caught up to where we were 21, 22 years ago. Our officers responded to 9,000 calls last year. 2,000 of those calls came in as 911. We had over 300 criminal applications, meaning that we arrested 300 people and charged, or charged 300 people altogether. We conducted 1,200 stops, motor vehicle stops, and responded to 300 motor vehicle accidents. Unfortunately, this is the only areas where I can cut as, as my department is over, like I said, over 90% of it is wages. That would be my presentation.
Any questions?
Just a, another common theme, you know, that we always talk about is public safety. And I hope everybody heard what the chief just said. Two patrolmen. Think about it. Detective and the detective.
And just, just to kind of give you a brief idea, just recently, our officers conducted some drug investigation. The total manpower hours for that investigation on our end was between 50 to 60 hours, just for a drug investigation. If we're not funding this, then we're just inviting that to keep going on. So I would strongly discourage from cutting the police department.
And Mr. Chairman, I think the chief made a good point with being reactive versus proactive. And we really need a strong presence out there in public safety across the board. And I'm going to be very strong to back that and I'll diminish it in any way.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Treasurer, collector?
Good evening. We sort of have two distinct segments in the treasurer, collector budget. Sort of that first top part where the salaries go all the way down to the unemployment insurance trust. That's probably the only manageable portion in there. What's been reduced from this year's working budget to next year's working budget is a reduction of $63,799. That leaves the three people in place. We are learning right now. We have people less than two years here, so we hear we're cutting education. The education component for these people is modest. And there's only three of us. The office used to be a treasurer and a collector with an assistant. We were able to bring it down and have it run well with three and a part-timer. The part-timer is only a modest dollar amount. The treasurer, collector's office seems to be at the end of the line. Everything comes this way as far as the dollars come in. There's payroll that goes out, there's accounts payable. Quite a bit collects down here. So with this budget and with these reductions, this portion was reduced, but we were able to keep the doors open. There's a couple of notes I'd like to make as far as what the money is being spent for. Your line item for data processing and your line item for the software upgrade, that's the minimum. I think it was discussed previously, you can't buy a half a year or something. This gets the door open, things functioning. There are some efficiencies there. We have a vendor that's printing bills for us, so we're not spending that money. We've gone from two-letter size bills to a single legal size. We have already gone through this year and had our OPEB study done. That's a $5,000 savings. There is no sick time buyback, so we didn't have to put this on hold. This keeps the door open for five days, similar hours, with the same people. The second portion of the budget gets, gets a little lengthy. We'll start with the easy one. We go through and we take the $10,000 out of the OPEB trust, that's a step in the wrong direction. We're going to go through and have a call with Standard and Poor's. And they're going to ask, are you saving for the future? You, you see that you have a stabilization, you have a stabilization, the capital account? Those are being funded. Not funding OPEB each year is a step backwards. It's an easy reduction to make and it's something you can visit mid-year. Some of the other items in there, the county retirement. So a couple of things that go on there. We're funding the current employees and the previous employees. There was a reform in 2012 and in those 11 years, they've stopped some of the bleeding. The town is very fortunate to be with the Worcester Regional Retirement System and their money is with, with the PRT in that we can take advantage of these up years, but in addition to the up years, there's not a big backslide when there is an adjustment in the market. What is on the county retirement assessment is a bill from the actuaries. They have carved out the water, the sewer, and then the water and sewer employees. We pay the second half in advance to take advantage of that discount rate. So this is the lowest number. Again, this is something, unfortunately, it is a bill, it's not really a negotiated item. Our group insurance trust. The town of Dudley is very fortunate to be in the Hampshire Council of Governments Insurance Trust. For the last two years, there has been a cannibalization of the trust. They were capitalized more than five months. The runout is supposed to be three months. Think of your household budget. You don't spend every paycheck. You have some money in anticipation of your expenses coming through. Each year, they've taken a little bit off so that the 6% that comes in this year should be a higher number. So we have a better insurance number, also having taken advantage of the fact that trust had cannibalized in, in whole, maybe $8 million over the last year and a half. So we're buying something already at a reduction. We get down to Medicare tax. There is a nominal number in there. I don't believe the town of Dudley has more than one employee that was hired prior to '86 and is not Medicare eligible. So all of the payroll, it's 1.45 that goes on top. Quickly, there was 5.5 million in payroll last year. That's $80,000 that needs to get matched by the employer and reported quarterly. We get into Insurance General. That has been an increase since 2021. Some of the indicators, our agent no lo, the agent from three years ago is no longer doing this. The carrier that used to be the provider for the 111F, the public safety portion of it, they've ceased doing business, so we have a new provider. We are with the State Pool Maya. So it's sort of an, an indication of, of sort, of how things go. We get to the maturing debt and the maturing debt interest. We've, we've, we've made these expenditures and we're paying them back right now. A portion of what, what is paid in the interest is going to be offset by dollars coming in onto the tax rate. Items were debt-excluded. These items are in this budget. The Webster Dudley Intermunicipal, that is the agreement with the town of Webster for a percentage of their capital to run the sewer plant. That is a one-for-one item. Whatever that dollar amount is, is, is built onto the tax. The Webster Dispatch Assessment, that has gone up a decent amount over the last few years. It is a cost increase. I believe we have a seat at the table, but again, everybody's business, the cost of doing business is going up. So we've reduced on some ends, but that cost appears somewhere else. And I think that's coming to the last of it. Interesting statistic that I, I gleaned from this. There is a portion of the budget, that first portion, where you had your salaries, you had your software upgrades, things like that. That ranged between 5% and 6% of the total treasurer's budget, going back to 2021. So if we didn't have any people working there So if we didn't have any people working there and we didn't pay them and we didn't have any expenses, you'd still only be stuck down to a 5% reduction. So I appreciate everybody's position where we are. The manageable things that we could do, we got them down to over 19% or over down to. They were reduced by 19%. I hope nothing bad's going on. The other portions are sort of a stumbling block. These are bills that have to get paid and they're in the treasurer collector's budget. One of their, I have folders, we can go as deep as you'd like as far as, you know, Worcester Regional. Even, even the postage component, if you look back to January of 18, stamps were 50 cents. Now you're up to 60 cents, so that's a 20% increase. You have a town clerk who has more obligations to mail things out. And again, you're adding that 20% on there. Happy to, to
Any questions?
Explain on a few items here.
Any questions on the presentation?
Mr. Chairman, I, I just have a question. Looking at the budget line item sheet, listening to Mr. Camagnani breaking it down. And you've heard what I've said all night. But where I see, I just want to make sure this number is correct, where it shows a 15% increase. When everybody else is making a decrease.
Correct.
Why?
Those are, those are your fixed costs. This is the cost of doing business.
Bottom half is a fix, top half isn't.
Correct, correct.
So why didn't you present a model with a 10% decrease?
Okay, I'll, I'll revisit a, a statistic that I had. Of this budget, to go that bottom portion is 94%. So if we didn't pay all of the salaries going all the way down to the unemployment trust. That's going to be approximately a 5% reduction. No staff, no expenses, no computer software.
So that, those top 12 line items, you're saying is just 6% of your budget? Everything else that you can't touch is 94%?
That was my quick number.
And the increase of 15%, did that come from the top 12 line items or the bottom 94%?
So let's see, $64,000 roughly off of the 609. So if we netted out the top, we'd have 545, 824. And if we took the 47, 52, 633, plus the 264. So do the 5.545, 829, 824? Over the 3815. Brings it down to 14, if I'm doing this right. Happy to get back to you with an exact number. We're having, we're having a couple, we're having a public hearing. Happy to crunch the numbers and, and put them together.
I just wanted to see how much thought you put into this before you came here today. It's your budget.
Yep.
You should know where the 15% increase is coming from.
That's why they've been separated out. It's the reason I reached out to the town administrator ahead of it. That's the reason I sent an, a general, excuse me, a general email out that if there were questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And the answer that's being provided right now is if you need a detail down to the percentage. I'm, I'm looking at a different one that goes back to 2021. If we want to go back to 2019, we, we can break this down to
Just looking at the one we have right here. Not going back to anything.
Okay.
I think you know where the 15% came from, that's all. It's no big deal. You can't tell me, you can't tell me.
The, the three largest items on that bottom part is the, the county retirement, maturing debt, maturing debt interest, Webster Dispatch.
That's fine, I, I won't take up any more time.
Any other questions?
Yeah, hi Rich, can you kind of expound on the maturing debt? What is that year over year? What, what, what's the driver on that?
The, the driver on that is three debt excluded items. So we'd go through and we'd have a fire truck, which is in here for 775. We have 120 for two public safety vehicles and $110,000 for a brine machine.
Are these bo, are these bonded?
To be borrowed.
To be borrowed?
Yep. And it would be a one for one. So if we didn't borrow them in year one, we would be reducing that, that line item by a similar dollar amount.
I would assume significantly if we, if we bonded those, right?
Correct. There, there, there is also an offsetting amount. We have road betterments that we would borrow for. There would be an offsetting revenue for them for the residents who live on whichever street has been improved.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? No, okay, thank you, Richard. All right, as everyone probably heard, the Fire Chief had to go to emergency. So we're going to see if he can come back or not. We'll go to the
He thinks he'll be back, Mr. Chairman, he's been texting.
Texting me. All right. So with that, we will go to the school assessment.
Before we get going, do we have, is it in our packet? I can see it's a great kind of the school budget, or is it going to be put here right now?
This is, I, I did not bring the school budget, I brought the reductions.
So, so Mr. Lamason, the numbers we have is just a, the overview numbers, the final numbers?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Selectmen, FAA as well and the community. First, I want to thank you as a, a board, having representatives come to our all boards meeting that we had on February 1st. That's when we did present the FY24 budget. And we've been continuing to work on our, on our budget and working with the community of Charlton as well. I do want to make sure that the, everyone is aware that the chair, Mrs. Kathleen Camagnani is also in, in here. Also Jamie DeLobo, who's a Charlton School Community Representative is here. Kelly Zeller, who's a Charlton School Community Representative was here, but she had to leave. We have Richard Matthew, who's the Director of Finance and Operations for the district. So as we get into more detailed questions about assessments and numbers, if you have them this evening, he is certainly available. And then we have Dudley Middle School Principal Chris Dycheski here as well for questions. So this evening, as we already presented the FY24 budget, this evening we were coming into as other town departments to talk about what the reductions would look like if we had an unfavorable override. The sheet that you have in front of you, the blue box represents the reason why we are where we are. And it really comes down to bills. The value of 3.6 million dollars comes down to the actual cost of, of doing business for our district. So just looking at that list real quickly, we have contractual obligations of 1.2 million dollars. We have employment benefits and insurance, which you are in the same boat, increases in those areas. We have utility costs, substantial increases in those areas, running seven schools. Transportation costs, this has been something we've had to work extremely hard on this year. We actually went out to, out to bit again for a second time to try to lower the, the impact of the first year. But sizable increase, a restoration, some movement from our ESSA grant in restoration of a position within our district office. Out of district tuition, this is an incredible cost for us as a district. When we presented at the all boards meeting, it was a little bit less than that, it was around $430,000. But since that meeting, we've already increased the need to fund that line of out of district tuitions. Keep in mind that the offices of OSD, Massachusetts OSD permitted specialized schools for individuals with multiple disabilities to increase their tuition costs by 14% going into next year. So it's a sizable increase for us. And then you have technology, which was originally at $300,000, is now down to $75,000 as we continue to try to move towards updating our technology within our district. As I shared at a couple of meetings, we were on a lease to purchase program back in 2017. Last year was the last year, last payment on that. We're trying to get back into that to upgrade our systems. $75,000 isn't obviously going to do all of that, but it will do something for us as a district. So what I was prepared for this evening for you is to talk about if we had an unfavorable vote and what that will do for the Dudley Charlton Regional School District. Similar to what you've been hearing this evening, you know, there, you have a lot of department heads, a lot of individuals who work for the town of Dudley who, you know, we used to celebrate those that go above and beyond. Unfortunately, just like your town in our school district, it's become a job requirement to go above and beyond. So there are a lot of things that will certainly change in our district if we don't have a successful override with the community. One is, we will certainly change the experience of our students moving forward. And you'll see that in the, in the, in the items that I share with you this evening. And we are, as you heard this evening, we as a school district as well, will be moving to be a compliant regulatory district. That's where our movement will be. That's the only direction we can go in. And so that means removing or reducing things around what, just what we're required to do as a district. That's a, that's a difficult position to be in. In addition, you know, Dudley Charlton has done an incredible job of investing in the actual classroom. Hiring teachers, paying teachers, but it's, you know, teachers require, and students require support around that classroom. And we, since I've been here, we have done nothing but try to reduce around that to try to balance our budget on an annual basis. We're doing more and more of that here and it will be disappointing what you're going to hear on how we're doing that and how we're trying to reduce around that classroom, around that instructional room. And quite simply, it's, the next bullet is, you'll often hear in education, we talk about tier one, tier two, tier three, or multi-tiered system of support for our students. These reductions, and the reductions we're bringing forward will be reflective of removing a lot of tier two support. So the way that I'll try to explain that to you is tier one is the general ed classroom. That's the high quality instructional materials, that's adding in and, and teaching and learning within that particular classroom. Tier three is specialized instruction or special education. You know, a required legal service that you have to provide a student with disabilities. Tier two is everything in between. So not every student needs to move from tier one to tier three. As we continue to look at how we're going to balance a budget with a unfavorable vote for the override, we're removing tier two. So I want to share with you that that means we're going to compound the cost of educating students because our students will be going from tier one to tier three, because we won't have tier two available for our students. We won't have that, that opportunity in between to ramp up students that may, let's say, for example, a student is struggling with comprehension. The expectation is that we're going to provide some type of infusion of comprehension skills and strategies for that student, but not provide a special education program for that student. That's tier two. How do we do that in the gen ed classroom? There shouldn't be a lifetime membership or a year-long service for that student. It should be something that we can just ramp up, that's what's called tier two. So by nipping away at the tier two, that place between the gen ed classroom and specialized services, we're, we're, we're going to expand upon the cost of educating our students. Because we won't have anything in between. And then lastly, if there is not a, a, a successful vote, we will have to exhaust our E and D. Keep in mind, E and D, Access and Deficiency Fund is something that we use for operating expenses on an annual basis. It's part of our operating budget every year. It's a risk that we've taken that, as a district, that we've been set up financially to set up, to do. When we were originally looking at this override, we were looking at a way to try to restructure it so we wouldn't have to use E and D as far as operating expenses, but that had to go out the window because of all the bills that you see in that blue box that came forward for us. But what will happen if we exhaust E and D, that's the difference between the three, roughly the difference between the 3.6 ASC and the 2.7 reduction. We don't have utilities in, in our reduction here, so we'll have to use E and D to, to pay for those utility increases. The increased cost for special education out of school, out of district tuitions will be built into that use of E and D as well. So we'll get to a point, if we exhaust our E and D, the following year, not only is it our, coming in for an assessment, we will have to, it will be compounded by a request to refund or re, put the operating expense of E and D back into our budget. That's an additional 1 million, 1.1 million dollars that we count on, on an annual basis out of E and D. So from there, what is next? How do we get to a 2.7 million dollar reduction, which is very hard for us to do as a district? And if people have other ideas, we welcome them all, we've always been welcoming them. People can come in and meet with Mr. Matthew or myself. I'd love to go over this and go over ideas. We do typically hear a lot of ideas about, have you thought about starting your own specialized instruct, specialized transportation? Yeah, every one of those that have you thought abouts typically ends up being that you need to have an investment first to be able to get to it. So could it save us money over time? Yes, but we need an initial investment of, let's say, 2, 300,000, if not a little bit more, to buy all of our own vans, buses, drive, hire drivers, benefits, all that kind of stuff. Could it save money over time? It possibly could. But a lot of the thought abouts are requiring an initial invest, investment, which we don't have the funds, funds to do. So again, if there's an unfavorable vote for, for the override, the administrative team has recommended the, the top part of that gray box, which is a reduction of 31.4 FTEs in our district. And that brings us to 2.1 million dollars. So without going into very specific detail on every one of these, because a lot of, there's a lot of nuances that are still required to be worked out. And we tried to be equitable, meaning that it's not even numbers, meaning that every department feels the, the, the pain of having to reduce our budget by 2.1 million dollars. So for example, at Shepherd Hill, that entails eight, eight staff members, which again, we talked about those support systems in place for, for our students. And, you know, as it says in the top, you know, coming out of the pandemic was certainly a relief in many ways, but as far as student needs, it wasn't a complete relief for that. And the example I, I've given in the past is we've tried to do cost avoidance. And, you know, some of that has been involved with, you know, trying to provide services for our students so that our students don't have to go out of district. But again, as we continue to, to reduce some of these positions, we are looking at increases to our costs in the future. Middle schools, so the high school support system, departmental, meaning, you know, which departments we can reduce from, and that comes down to course selection and access for our students to not have the same level of access. Middle school, seven full-time positions that, it, it also includes to get to the value to 2 of $2.1 million, it also includes elimination of middle school sports, middle school interscholastic athletics. It reduces foreign language at the middle school, and then there are other departmental reductions. Again, trying to avoid the pitfalls of something that's regulatorily required by us as a district and making sure that we're in compliance. At the elementary school, across all elementary schools, library assistants and then tier-two individuals. Those individuals that provide that support for those students who may be struggling and may have a specific need at a certain time, those supports would be limited. And then district office, 3.4 FTE, that includes the Assistant Superintendent position as one of those FTEs, but that includes 2.4 addition to that within our office. And keep in mind, I did put 319 on there again, just to remind folks that we are out of 319 Massachusetts public schools that are going to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They're per people expenditure to run their school district. We are 319 out of 319. We are the last as a district in our state. So reducing central office, again, being partners in the process with the rest of our schools, we would certainly be, remain at 319. In special education, five full-time equivalent positions. That's a fluid reduction right now, because that could change tomorrow. We could have students move in that have specific needs that we need to actually increase staff, which we've had to do during this school year. You know, as I talk about the needs of our students, one of the things that we've identified coming through the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic is early intervention, EI, which is a program that is for students or for children that are from birth to age three, has been very limited. And so because of that, the referrals come to us as a public school when the child is three for services and support, and we have to, we're obligated to provide those. We're required to provide those. So we've had to increase our staffing at the pre-K level this school year. We've had to increase our staffing of paraprofessionals at the pre-K level. We've had to increase the intensive learning centers at the pre-K level, because early intervention programs have been decimated and have not come back from the pre-pandemic. Therefore, the public schools are required to provide those services. So again, that gets us to $2.1 million in reduction. Remember, this is a shared reduction. This is not just Dudley's reduction. This is a shared, as a regional school system. So we have an additional 580 that we need to look at, and these are the only items that are available. Again, unless somebody else has a better idea. We've been racking our brain, we've been working on this for a year now. These reductions are real. And we're working with our school committee, we have to land on something at some point in time, because we have to present two budgets, both balanced budgets, one with a favorable vote and one with an unfavorable vote. So these are available as options to reach an additional $580,000 with what we know today. Increase class size to 25 to 27 students per class. Again, that's a varying, that could be certain grade levels that we do that to gain a value, but the only way you can do that, the only way you're going to do that is reduce staff to gain value for the $580,000. Eliminate Shepherd Hill Regional High School and middle school non-athletic and non-music student activity stipends. These are clubs, these are opportunities for students after school. It's roughly around $90,000 that that would, could be yielded for that. Eliminate Shepherd Hill Regional High School department heads. This could possibly yield $200,000 for reductions, help us with reductions. This changes the structure of the high school, this changes the structure of teaching and learning at Shepherd Hill, and this includes additional reductions of staff. And then, to me, one of the worst, if we talk about, again, moving towards a compliant or regulatory school system, these aren't required, these aren't compliant, but these are necessary from my perspective, looking at high school athletics and high school music. It may not have to be everything, but it would have to be pieces of that to try to get to $580,000. One of the items that we did have on there, because full-day kindergarten is not required by Massachusetts Public School District, is we did have on our list with school committee to reduce our full-day kindergarten back to half-day kindergarten, and it was decided by the school committee that that was a non-starter, a non-negotiable item for them, especially given, as I shared with you about the early intervention and where we are, that need for that program is more than ever at this point in time. Now with that said, we know that last Thursday, some new assessment numbers came out for our districts. There was a change. We are working with Town Administrator John Ruder. Our number, 3.6 million, isn't changing, but how that impacts Dudley will change, and how that impacts Charlton has certainly changed. So we have a lot more work to do. We are ultra-focused on both communities to try to come in with a number for you as a community and for Charlton and present a balanced budget. So what that exact number is today, I can't, I don't have that for you, but the assessments did change. Dudley's went down and Charlton's went up, so we have some work to do.
Any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I just wanted to, with, prior to our discussion included, at some point, we really need to have a final figure, and I, my understanding is the school committee will likely vote on that, hopefully on the eighth, maybe?
Yeah, school committee has a budget workshop Wednesday evening at Charlton Middle School at 7:00. Then they have a budget hearing the following Wednesday, March 8th, at 6:45, we're planning for 6:45, and then more discussion on FY24, and hopefully we can land on, you know, the goal is to land on a number at that point in time on March 8th.
Okay. We'd certainly appreciate it on this end. And I know that we, as you mentioned, we've been working internally to try to sharpen our pencils.
Yep.
And get to a final number for both the municipal side and the district side.
Yep.
So I think that's important at this point.
We've really appreciated your time, and we've also been working with Andrew Golis at Charlton as well.
Question, have we come up with a number yet, the tax impact to the residents, what this would cost?
Again, with the adjustment from last Thursday, I don't want to throw a number out there without us really refining that, because I don't think either one of us want to be held to a number that I throw out right now.
Okay.
So give us, give us a chance to refine that and get to the March 8th, March 9th meeting for that.
Just asking, because I didn't ask that.
We had something until last Thursday.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, thank you, Stupert and Lamarche. This is, these numbers are stark, and like we always talk about, you know, public safety being number one, you know, we talk about quality of life issues, our education is usually at the top of the list, and, you know, I just continue to be the advocate for those who need this the most. I just want everybody, when we come out with the numbers for everything, I want everybody to take a really hard look at what this means to everybody in our community. So, these are big numbers.
Yeah, this represents 5% of our budget.
Thank you, Steve.
A 2.7 as far as a reduction.
Any other questions? Mike?
I guess I do, but I think maybe Mr. Matthews would be able, if he's willing to come up.
I'm sure he would. He'd be happy to answer.
All right.
I'd be happy that he answered, too.
I guess my first question, I'm trying to find a little continuity in some of the numbers. Last year, we were kind of presented with, on Dudley's side, I don't, I can't count the total number for Dudley-Chelton, there was about a 10 and 1/2% increase request on Dudley's side, which brought, was a request somewhere around, I believe it was around $10,265 in that area?
Sounds about right there.
We were able to come up 5% to about $9,700,000. Then we put some opera money in there, which brought us to, I think, $10,000, almost $10,100,000. What, that seemed to make you, at the $10,265, that seemed to make everything, I guess, okay at the time. I think Charlton voted on that. Were there any cuts in that particular number? I don't believe there was.
No, there were absolutely were.
Okay.
There were reductions in the middle school's staffing levels.
At the $10,265?
Yes, yeah. We started, we started the budget process with reductions.
Taking out any, the school for the evaluation for Shepherd Hill and that exclusion, if we take those out, where would you be? What is your request from Dudley this year? I mean, I'm seeing $10 million now, but what would that be?
So with the release of the state numbers last Thursday, that really is driving back to in our termate, in the formula, it's not our termate, it's the formula of what it turns out to be. So Charl, I mean, Dudley's assessment at this point in time is just, is a little south of $1.25 million. The initial estimate of the $3.7 million increase to the budget based on the population at Shepherd Hill put Dudley's number around $1.8 million. So we're very happy that those numbers have significantly lowered. That will obviously lower the request for the override. What it does do, however, is it's in a balance, it does increase Charlton's assessment, and Charlton had already had concerns, had $1.9 million as a number, and referring to $2.2 million, it's obviously got much more concern.
So in...
If I could, we did, we cut six positions last year and moved one to Esser. So a total of seven positions were part of the budget process for last year.
Where would we be, where do you think we'd be? What do you think Dudley's amount would be without the cuts directly? In other words, are you looking at $11.8? Is that, is that how, I'm trying to figure out where the number's coming from. Well, I mean, you obviously got a lot of cuts here, if you don't have an override, so that's what I'm trying to figure out, the actual number that's coming from Dudley.
Nobody can get Rich. Rich, can you come up a little bit? Sorry, the mic, so we get the mic going.
So again, just to be very clear, Dudley's assessment at the $3.6 million increase works out to be $1.2 million for the upcoming year. Again, a little south of $1.25 million. All right, the state formula is, as we all sat through multiple presentations of, a very interesting creature, and, you know, Charlton's growth factor played a huge factor in where the final numbers ended up.
I hate to be simple, but we gave you $10 million last year. What do you want this year? Basically, give me within, within $100,000.
As I shared on the spreadsheet, you could see where the numbers were going at the $1.8 million. Now that we have the new final state numbers, we'll factor that in and go from there. But again, the request for Dudley is just a little south of $1.25 million increase for the upcoming year.
Okay. All right. So you're looking at about $11.5?
Yep, thereabouts.
Okay, that's what I need to, that's all, thank you.
Don't hold us to that.
Well, I mean, within, I mean, whenever you come up, you find out. But you're looking at about $11.5.
Yeah, again, we don't have the ability to create new revenues unless school committee looks at fees or something like that, and even that wouldn't be a thing of great substance. So, you know, I think these are the numbers based on the governor's budget. We all understand the state budget process, it'll go to the House, it'll go to the Senate, it'll go to a conference committee. So the numbers aren't finalized yet from the state's perspective, but this is the first time, you know, last Thursday was the first time that we had actual information that we could, you know, put a formula to.
I guess this is kind of off the mark there, but going forward, on a regional school system, and I don't know anything about how this works, but on a regional school system, I know a lot of regional schools, their K through eight is like a separate budget than the actual high school. Is there, does that affect us? I mean, as far as...
Some districts are regionalized, K through, pre-K through 12, such as Dudley-Chelton. Some districts are only regionalized at the high school level.
Okay.
I point to Tantascwa, Sturbridge, that whole arrangement is, it's called a superintendency union. So yes, local schools are still within local control through whatever level is decided, and then it becomes regionalized.
But we don't lose out on any of the foundation budget money because of the way our town's structured?
No, the, I mean, the formula takes into account, you know, the populations for both Dudley and Charlton.
Okay. All right, just a thought. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chief.
Sorry, we had a little smoke in the building call before, so I had to leave. So I'm just, I'm not going to go through it line by line, I'm just going to show where we had to cut and explain that unless you have any other questions, because I'm just going to say more of the same of what everybody else said. So on the salary lines, those are all contractual, but I actually saved money on three of the positions because they were new hires that replaced people with tenure that are no longer with us for one reason or another. So they started at like a lower step in a lower pay grade, so we actually, that kind of helped me out a little bit from that perspective. But, so, starting with call firefighter's salary, I reduced that by $13,000. I don't know how much the town realizes we rely on the call department, but the call department is what keeps my fire department portion functioning, because I have either two people on a shift or three people full-time. That's basically there to run one ambulance if you're lucky, or one call for a fire alarm or something like that, but any multi-truck call, we rely heavily on our call department. And I've worked really hard to keep that call department going. It's a very difficult scenario to keep up. A lot of area towns have trouble with it. I mean, I'm not going to turn them away because I cut the $13,000 out. It's all call-dependent, it's all dependent on how many calls we do a year, but obviously we're not going to not answer the call. We have to answer the call, so if the budget goes over, it goes over. If I lose my job because of it, then I lose my job. I'm not going to not respond to an emergency in town. We cut overtime budget from, by $25,000 down to $40,000. I pretty much go over in that in every year as it is now, so it would just become worse. Backup ambulance pay, we cut by $1,000. Ambulance billing service, I cut by $15,000. Maintenance agreements, I cut by $4,000. Those are things we have to pay for every year, like our software and things of that nature. I already don't have enough in that line, so now I have less. Ambulance license and certification, I left a dollar in there, so that's state mandated things, all as that means is I cut $1,300 out of that, but I'm just going to have to take it out of another line, because I mean, we have to recertify our ambulance with the state every year. Emergency management was cut to a dollar, that pays for our internet and our radio line fee to the water tower, which is our main repeater site. All as that means is I'm going to take that out of a different line. Copy and fax was reduced to a dollar. Fire expense, I left alone. Ambulance call and career, I reduced by $40,000. That also pays for all our equipment replacement and medical supplies. Cancer screenings were cut to a dollar, which is actually really not good, because actually two of my individuals did early screening when I sent them, and they caught something early enough where it wasn't anything, and it was removed with an office visit or a day surgery, whereas if it wasn't caught, it could have ballooned into something a lot bigger and cost the town a lot of money in IOD and whatever else. Lifeguards, there'll be no lifeguards. I know some of you really feel passionate about that, but there's just not going to be lifeguards. And I cut the gas diesel account from $15,000 to $10,150, and that got me roughly $100,000 that I was requested to cut from my budget. And I mean, I can't find any more creative ways to find money. Everybody knows all the grant money I've gotten to help support the department, and I still write grants, but now I'm hearing through the grapevine that this is the last year on a couple of those federal grants. I can't say that for sure, but I mean, some of these grants are going to start drying
Any questions for the fire chief? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Oh, my God.
I would note, Mr. Chairman, that both the ambulances, the...
I would note, Mr. Chairman, that both, both the ambulances, the second ambulance pay and those line items, those ambulances actually help fund the fire department's budget. I think it's almost seventy percent of it. So to cut out the ability to command those ambulances and keep them going is going to be a double bonus because it's going to cut out a revenue source when that money runs out.
Looks like Town Administrator provides a recommendation to assemble the fiscal year twenty-four budget.
So like I mentioned, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go back now with, based on some input that I hope will be forthcoming from both the Board of Selectmen and the FAA. I mean, I'm pretty clear, the Board is pretty, the Board of Selectmen has always been very strong in their public policy to support public safety, public health, make wise investments in terms of applying for grants and that sort of thing. But we're really up against it, so there's going to be some hard decisions to make. So I'd like to just kind of ask the Board, both Boards, for a little bit of direction as to where you want me to go back with my scalpel and repair the hatchet budget that we just were presenting. We have a limited amount of stabilization left that we can look into infusing if necessary. I mentioned I'm going to have to be the real bad guy for a lot of departments and go back and make some hard decisions in terms of who's getting funded and who isn't. Priorities, so I'm waiting for marching orders at this point.
Any comments?
Kind of hard to give them, sorry. I mean, you can go back and review it, but it's going to be hard till we get the final numbers from the schools. I'm assuming Bay Path numbers must be agreeable because I haven't heard about Bay Path.
Well, Bay Path numbers will come out and I, I put them in at three and a half percent. I don't think that, that's been traditionally about where they've been. I don't think it's going to be much higher than that. But having said that, I probably just shot myself in the foot. I think we're pretty clear on what the assessment is going to look like for Dudley-Charlton Regional School District if the override fails versus if it passes. So that's the only number that I need. But we do also need to know for the override amount, we need to finalize those numbers on, on the district side to move forward. We're all, we're under a very strict timeline to get this up onto a ballot and let the people have a chance to vote on it.
Mr. Chairman, assuming water sewer is exempt because they rent the price, they fund their own expenses?
The only, only understand, well, the Water and Sewer Department, I haven't, have a couple of numbers that haven't been finalized yet. So we plugged in last year's numbers. But they are pretty much outside of the general fund. So I, that hasn't been a big consideration at this point.
So what numbers are we waiting for for them?
I think we funded at the same level for chargebacks. Is that what we did to this day? And of course, some of their debt is reflected also in the, I think we need the final number for that as well.
So, one more, Mr. Chair. So their, it's a drop in the bucket. So their indirect cost shows up. I didn't see it show up on the revenue, town revenue, but I saw it show up in their line item budget. Is that, is that a number?
I believe there's a plan to get that number. I would ask that either the Treasurer or the Chairman of the Water Sewer. What did that turn around in the beginning?
Scott?
Can you repeat the question for Scott?
When, my, so the question is, when will we finalize their budget? There's a couple of outstanding line items in there.
Okay, we haven't seen the numbers yet. I, I just saw them this morning for indirects and, you know, because insurance is what insurance is. Retirement is what retirement is. We really can't do much about that. But the indirects, as it affects the general budget, we just saw a number, a proposed number today, today. But we've been trying to get some concrete information as to how that's figured out every year. And we can't get it.
All right. I just, I'm just, I know it's revenue, I couldn't see it on the revenue side. I don't know.
We have our meeting on Wednesday night and we'll be talking about it then.
All right, can you just let us?
Yes, stay in touch.
We'll, yeah, we'll-
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We add down to, you know, dollars and cents at this point, so.
Right.
I mean, our priorities, Jonathan, I mean, hasn't changed as far as I know, as far as public safety being number one, the health stuff that we require to do. Maybe look through that lens. Obviously, quality of life issues, you know, education, you know, is right up there. Which we'll hear about next week.
Is there anything in terms of capital, capital improvement stabilization and general stabilization accounts? I mean, my recommendation would be to leave something in there, obviously.
Yeah, but, you know, that's where you're going to use the balance.
Right. And I've infused, we balance the zero now, but now we have to go back and figure out what's more important. Is, are two police officers more important than A B S C?
Right.
You know?
Right.
Cancer screenings, Board of Health agent, food inspections, that sort of thing.
Cancer screenings, screenings now come off. Yeah, obviously, if we could, I mean, I would like to see that, you know, try not to like lose head count.
There's no way around that.
I know, but I just wanted to, I wanted to say it because I know it's happening all over the place right now. Believe me. And I know, and it's not lost on me. We always talk about we can't go backwards. Many of our departments always say that, and this is one of those do or die situations that we're faced with right now.
Okay, Mr., I think we're all on the same page in terms of what you're asking me to do. And I can speak to you individually during the week.
Yep.
To run a few things past you. So I'll provide at the March ninth meeting, I'll provide my recommended, my recommended budget like we generally do, reflective of this lower amount. And my suggestion would be that if we are able to take a vote on March ninth, then my rec, then, then we should probably not wait till the very last second to send this to the, to the town clerk so she can get the ballot prepared.
The calendar is not in our favor if we wait any longer.
No, it's not. On March ninth, we'll, we'll also hear budget requests, assuming that the override is successful. But it'll be the initial draft budget. We still have time to talk about that on our normal budget schedule. But we'll have it, we'll have it vetted and vetted.
Sorry, Richard.
It's okay. Important discussion, just as a quick follow-up for the indirects. They're twenty-three years old. It's a matter of plugging numbers in. They were provided with the budget. They weren't put together over the weekend or this morning or something like that. They, they were submitted ahead of time. If they need to be vetted, that's, that's something that's gone on previously. Those, those numbers are solid. Of course, if you go through and start to cut some of the positions upon which those calculations occur, then you'll get a modification. But for the most part, it's, it's a simple spreadsheet. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Set, Mr. Administrator?
I would, at, at this point, I would go ahead and close the hearing, Mr. Chairman, unless there's any further input.
All right, close the hearing at nine oh four. What's next?
We vote relative to what we just discussed at the public hearing. But either, I mean, what is the, FAA, they can take, they can take it or vote now. Or you could vote now if you wanted to.
Board's pleasure.
Vote to be wide. For example, if something you heard, you want to give me absolute direction, you leave one hundred and ten percent in this line item. Paul, you could do that. And the same with the FAA if they wanted to.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I'd rather have all the numbers.
Yes, exactly.
No motions, any motions from FAA?
I guess just keep working diligently with the department heads.
All right, so there'll be another joint Board of Selectmen FAA workshop scheduled for Thursday, March ninth at six thirty, where the, the rest of the recommendations for ten percent reduction budget were presented and a first draft budget for year twenty-four. All right, we good for that for tonight? All right, we got one more. I'm going to open the hearing for opting out of the vote by mail. And we're going to open that at nine oh six P M. It's time, Administrator?
Mr. Chairman, Laurie's on her way up to talk about what we're going to be asking the Board of Selectmen to do this evening in terms of the newly, the new law that provides for the vote by mail. What the Board of Selectmen require or ask to do.
Laurie?
Good evening. So if I could, I would just like to go over first the financial impacts of the Votes Act before we get into the recommendation of this. For all Tuesday elections, which is the federal and state, and if we do go with the April twenty-fifth, the last day to register to vote will always be a Saturday from nine A M. to five P M. The Votes Act also made early voting by mail permanent for all presidential primaries, state primaries, and state elections. This represents a huge amount of workload that they put on our office as far as logging in when people request things, mailing it out, logging it back in when it comes in, et cetera. Requires early voting in person for presidential primaries, state primaries, and state elections. It's fourteen days for state elections, including Saturdays and Sundays. Seven days for primaries, including a Saturday and a Sunday. It allows for the advance removal and advance deposit of the early absentee ballots. This is something that, while they say it allows for, it's really necessary because the volume that we have with the vote by mail, there, it would be impossible to process it on election day because when you're processing it during the election, if a voter comes in, you have to stop the process, let the voter in person vote, and then you can continue going through. When we do the advanced processing, it takes between five and seven hours of continuously going through that process, logging them in, running them through the machine, doing the tallying. And that's with four teams of two people, plus myself and my assistant town clerk. The Votes Act requires the Board of Selectmen to opt out of the vote by mail for local elections. You have that option. You cannot vote, opt out of any of the state or federal elections, but for local, you can. What it would require is forty-five days prior to the election with a roll call vote at a public hearing, which is what we're having tonight. And this must be done for every election. So you can't just do it one time and have it be for all future elections. Each election, you would have to go through that process. The Votes Act also allows the Board of Selectmen to opt into in-person voting for local elections. And if you chose to do that, you would be able to choose how many hours you want, the fourteen days before, like they do for the state and the federal ones. You wouldn't have to do that. Or even the seven days for a local election, you could set whatever hours you wanted in days for that. That being said, my recommendation would be to opt out of the vote by mail for this election, especially where we're looking at budget problems right now. This is an unfunded election to begin with, so we're going to be looking to see where we can take the money to fund this election. So that would cut down on many costs. If we didn't do the vote by mail, you will, also wouldn't have to have the advanced processing, which that came to, I want to say it was about eight hundred dollars last time. Plus, I have a police detail too, because anytime we're opening ballots and putting it through, I want to have a police officer there just so that there's no problem, anyone saying, you know, what we did with ballots, just like we do with an election, we have them there. So that's an extra cost there too. Okay, so the, I know it might be a concern that someone can't come to the election. This is what we used to do before the vote by mail, so it's pretty much just going back to how elections used to be run. We are still going to have, no matter what you choose to do tonight, you're still going to have the absentee ballot voting. So if someone is out of town on business or on vacation or not physically able to come to the polls, they can still apply for an absentee ballot application, and we will mail those out. So I don't know what the Board's pleasure is on that. If you were going to go for one or the other, if you didn't want to go opt out of the vote by mail and you didn't want to opt into early voting, I would say if you wanted to make it more inclusive, if you went with one or the other, either the vote by mail or the early voting, I would recommend going with the early voting. There's not as much of a cost associated with that. We could have it be Monday through Thursday of that week of the election, and we could do it during normal business hours. It would require a little bit more work on our end as far as reporting, but we wouldn't have to do the pre-processing because there wouldn't be nearly the amount that we would have if we did the vote by mail.
Thank you. So before we close the hearing, Town Administrator, any recommendations for the Board of Selectmen?
I think the town clerk put it best. We, we're providing for walk-in voting, just like we normally would on voting day. And within, absentee ballots still exist, whether you're going to be away, you're away now, you're infirmed, you can't make it here. Those two options still, still exist. So I can't imagine, after what we heard tonight, why we would seek to, to, you know, we're going to eliminate cancer screenings, but, but add to the cost for this, for the special election when we're satisfying the requirement, the both requirements of someone who can't make it and someone who can come down and vote on voting day.
As we said, it's only for local elections.
Right. You, you don't have any options on state or federal.
Mr. Chair, Laurie, you, you said, left my words, lesser two eagles, keep the early voting. You can walk in and vote during regular hours, right?
If you wanted to do that, you could do that. What I would recommend on that, because there's some regulations, let me just read it to you. Okay, so you can't start, it has to be seventeen days prior to the election that the early voting would start, so it can't be earlier than that. And it has to conclude the second business day prior. So what I would recommend is if you were thinking of doing the early voting, that you would have it go, let's have it on here someplace, bear with me. Okay, so if you're opting into the early voting, I would recommend that it would be Monday, April seventeenth through Thursday, April twentieth. It could not be on that Friday because it has to end two days before the election. So that's as much as you could, you could get it. We could have the hours set during our regular, normal business hours from, actually, I would have it be from eight thirty to four because there's reporting we have to do before and at the end of the day and tally everything up so that we still would be able to do it during our workday.
I mean, I'm, I'm a big believer in making it easier for people to vote, not harder. And I don't think anybody is intending to do that. And I understand it puts us back where we were, but at a minimum- And I understand it puts us back where we were, but at a minimum, I think I, when it's time to make a motion, I would support keeping the early voting for now. And if we get in a better position down the road, and we decide to opt back in vote by mail, like Laurie said, we can do it before every election. That'd be my motion if it gets to that point.
I think we can only do it during a local election, right?
Only during the local ones.
Especially this, this is a pretty, it's a pretty big vote. I mean, you know, I'd like to have every avenue available for people, and I get, I get it, the absentee, you know, there's safeguards in place, but I would, I would prefer to make it as easy as possible for people to vote. Especially for this one, this is a big one. Talking about the future of the town. This is big. And the schools, obviously.
Any other questions or comments for town clerk?
The only thing I would say right now is all we, all we're discussing for tonight is the opt-out or vote by mail.
Right, for the, um, if you were opting into the early voting, I would have to get the consensus of at least fifty percent of the registrars in order to request the early voting in person.
So we can do that at next meeting?
Yes, you have plenty of time for that.
So tonight would just be a strictly opt-out by mail vote?
Yes.
All right, any other questions before I close the uh, hearing? And then, close the hearing at nine fifteen. Thank you, Laurie. So uh, is there any, what's the board's pleasure on uh, opting out of the vote by mail or any other action?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we opt out voting by mail.
A motion, is there a second?
Second for discussion, yeah, thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm going to vote no on this. And if it comes that vote, early walk-in, early voting is allowed, at the next meeting, I would ask for reconsideration to make my vote affirmative. Because I'm, I'm a believer, I want to make it as easy as possible. I know, I know there's a cost generated, but that's my discussion.
Mr. Marson?
This is a very politically charged topic, even though it wasn't meant to be. So I just wanted to throw that out there that this isn't something that we, this is the first time we've ever been asked to deal with something like this. I'm torn because, like Mr. Sullivan, you know, it's kind of how things work, you know, and if, if you, especially for a local election, we're not talking about anything with parties or anything like that, right? So there's that side of it, and there's also, like, you know, chief's talking about laying off cops, school's talking about laying off teachers. Right? So, I mean, if there's, if there's a cost and we have to, like, pad that, especially as the hatchets and scalpels are still being wielded and we haven't come to final numbers, I, you know, I'm having a hard time, you know, reconciling my first point. That, you know, to make, to make room for that, especially since we have them, the ability to vote in person. I would love to see an early vote. I think that's, people are used to that now, and I think they come to expect it, so I would, I would expect it as well. The town clerk, hopefully we can do that.
I'm sorry, what's that?
I'm, my, my feelings are, we need a, we're going to need an early vote. Right? People, people are used to it, so we should.
To opt into the early voting? Honestly, I don't think it would be, um, I don't think any of the registrars would be against that.
Right. As long as, my conscience, this is just me talking, I would feel a lot better about this, knowing that we would have, you know, a runway before and, and election day to do that. That's, that's the only thing that makes this palpable to me. So how can we, how can we do that tonight?
We can't. Needs to be an agenda, I don't.
Okay.
They, they, it's actually, you, you talk about through the chair, a political football that's specifically designed so you must opt out. You must, everybody has to have a roll call vol, vote and show the, and, and have to sit there and say, when we're, we're opting out.
We're only opting out, if we, if we do this, we're only opting out of the mail-in. There's a, a plethora of other opportunities to vote.
I agree, Mr. Chairman. Like, like I said, there should be, I mean, you're not, nobody's losing anything. You can get an absentee ballot, you can get, you can be in Florida and vote.
Right.
You can be in Texas and vote. You can be at home and vote. You could be visiting your grandkids and vote. There's no issue with mail-in voting. You can get an absentee ballot, you just have to take the extra step to ask for it. And then the other issue is, you can walk in on voting day and, and ask your ballot. So you're not, you're not retracting.
No, I get all that. I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you.
If you feel that, if somebody feels that strongly about it.
Yeah.
Get an absentee ballot, but calm down.
And that's they do, but I wanted to make sure we talked about this. This isn't just something that we, this, this got the, due respect that a topic like this got. But so I, I, I meant what I said, you know, I would feel bad, I would feel better doing this if we knew about the other thing, but if we don't, we can't do that now.
So, Mr. Chairman, the um, discussion's going well. Looking at the pros and cons, you're not losing anything. Like Mr. Ruda pointed out, uh, but my understanding is that later on, we won't be, we'd have to put it on the agenda again and ha, to vote out within the proper timeframe. So I'm assuming it's put on the agenda tonight to, to fit into that timeframe and to vote on, and now would be the time to vote.
That's right.
Opting out, and if we don't, then we're stuck with it? There, there's no coming back to it.
Now, the next election, you have to do it. I think Laurie said you got to do it before every election. So it'll only be for this.
The next election might not be a local.
Right, that's who I'm talking about.
You don't have the option unless it's local.
Right.
There'll be another one at some point, right?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, an absentee ballot is a mail-in ballot you have to just plan for?
You just have, I'm sorry, you just have to ask for it.
So it's still mail-in voting, it's just.
Right, you just have to take the extra, instead of it being dropped in your mailbox without asking for it, you have to ask for it.
Instead of just going through Dunkin' Donuts drive-thru, you got to call ahead of time.
Correct.
Before you pick it up.
Right.
Basically.
Right. The only other difference too is an absentee, you're supposed to have a reason for not being able to come in and to request an absentee. So either you're going to be away on business, you're, you're sick, or some other reason that you couldn't come, that you need to have, you need to have the absentee ballot.
Thank you.
So ju, just for clarity, if someone, let's say someone's working that day, they can request an absentee ballot because they're working.
They can. I mean, some people work out of state. They might not be able to get back between the hours. You could absolutely do that.
And the steps, how would someone request that? I'm only asking because I, I.
Sure.
This is an important vote.
Mm-hmm. We have the absentee ballot applications on our website. You can send it in to us, you can print it out. You can come down and get one from the office, fill it out, and then we just keep a log. We've got a couple that have, we've got probably like twenty-five or thirty that always go for the absentee ballot. So it's people that have mobility issues, um, that it's too hard for them to come down. So they always request one. So we get the list dotted when we get the ballots in, then we start mailing them out. And if more come in until the deadline to get the applications, we'll keep mailing them out.
All right, so, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Just to clarify, I think it requires a roll call vote, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
No more discussion? Roll call vote?
Mark Landry, aye.
Carrie Siganovich, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye.
John Marcy, nay.
Steven Sullivan, nay.
All right, three, two. Thank you. Let's see. Approved the minutes of two, six, two thousand twenty-three. It's the board's pleasure.
Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of February sixth, twenty twenty-third. Second.
Um, uh, discussion, you're none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed, unanimous.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I wasn't present, and I did not see the minutes in the meeting tonight, you, I did not.
So one, one abstain.
Well, abstain, yeah, I wasn't present, so I'm making an abstention. Sorry, thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome. Four, zero, one. Departmental communication, you got any more in you tonight?
Just uh, two quick things. Um, back in February ninth, uh, approximately eleven forty-five, our officers were dispatched to Chaysav for domestic disturbance. Uh, upon, as they were arriving, were advised that the male party left uh, with a black gun described as a training gun. They got into a small pursuit, uh, that lasted about three minutes through uh, Dudley and Webster, and went back to Chaysav. Uh, the male party exited the vehicle and started pointing the gun in the air and shooting. Based on my uh, twenty-two years' experience, the gun looked as realistic as you can, you could tell. It uh, was shooting off its shell casings. Our officers created distance. Um, I was one of the officers that was, responded. Webster responded also immediately. We established a perimeter and established a, a communication with the male subject. After about twenty-five, thirty minutes of negotiating, uh, the male party put the gun down, surrendered. So I reached out to um, Webster Police because we had about uh, fifteen Webster officers arrive. We had ten officers from our department respond to this. Some of the officers were on details, and that just shows the character of the uh, the man and woman that worked for both towns. Uh, some of these officers were on details, some of them were at home. They went to the station, grabbed their vests, and responded to the call. So I just want to kind of point that out, that, that, you know, both towns uh, have a great group of officers that are willing to uh, you know, put themselves at risk. Uh, fortunately, this was uh, an incident where it ended up being, uh, came to a peaceful solution, but uh, I, I gave a lot of uh, kudos to the Webster Police Department because they uh, they were able to negotiate with the male party to surrender. And second, um, the police, the W Police Association took a vote uh, last week, and they're going to be donating fifteen hundred dollars to the Women's Club for the uh, for the playground. Um, I don't have the check today, but I will be dropping that off uh, probably this week sometime for you. Other than that, that's about it. Thank you.
On uh, March twenty-first, I'll be meeting with the Board of Health. I'll be coming to the meeting with a licensed site professional from Mace Adhesives. Um, and we're going to invite the neighborhood here so he can give an explanation of the release, releases during the fire and how the cleanup's going, and just to ensure everybody they're safe and what's been going on with that. I've been talking to Jen about it, and um, anybody from those neighborhoods that want to attend that meeting should attend that meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
George?
Uh, nothing too much. We're going to start some early flushing this year. We've got a lot of water out there still dirty from all those projects we've had, and some people have been complaining, so once the weather gets better, we'll get out there as quick as we can. Thanks.
Thank you. Rich? Did I miss anybody else? Okay. Student rep was smart, she took our recommendation. Selectmen comments?
I just, Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank everybody uh, for showing up and uh, giving their presentations and educating us on the pros and cons. Um, I know it's a lot of hard work and there's more to come. Um, so just be patient, and uh, we'll get through this together. Thank you.
I'm not going to repeat Mark's. I'll just say I'm good. Thank you.
Sullivan?
Just want to apologize. I missed the last couple of meetings. I was traveling. I know there was an important one at the schools, Mr. Lamar stated. But as Mark said, thank everyone for their efforts. It's very bleak and it's very uh, very, very tough to digest, but we'll get through it somehow. Thank you.
Mr. Marcy?
Yeah, I'll echo what the others said. Uh, stark is the word of the day. Um, some big numbers, you know, learning that, you know, we've, you know, done pretty well with not, other than during pandemics, you know, cutting headcount and things like that, but it, this stuff's getting real, everybody, and um, just when we do have final numbers, I'll just challenge everybody, you know, that's involved in the team to make sure that, that everything is out there for people to digest, what it means to them personally, from a financial standpoint, not only like programs and people and all that stuff, but, you know, people need to hear that. You know, tell people five to seven times so they understand something. Because this isn't the time to just kind of hope, because hope isn't a strategy when you're, when, when things are this bad. Right? So make sure it's out there, make sure everybody there, set up meetings with people, invite them to come. Every media we have, at our disposal, website, Facebook, all that stuff, get it out there. And uh, stay safe during the storm. Thanks.
Well said, Mr. Marcy. Um, just, you know, uh, working through the, the good times and working through the tough times are uh, all, all part of the, all the, all the jobs of all the department heads and everyone who works in the town or anywhere else for that matter, when there's uh, difficult decisions to make. So thank you for doing it with uh, concern and for uh, working the process the best you can. So, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Second. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So moved. I think we got a second before the first.
Well, you said motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, unanimous.
Thank you, everybody.